Good evening. Welcome to a regular meeting of the Town Milton Select Board. Today is December 12th. We begin by calling the meeting in order. We'll go right to item two. We will, this board will meet again on December 26th, which looks like will be a day meeting. It will be posted in enough time. It'll be at the Cronin Conference Room. We'll meet on January 9th of 2019, January 23rd of 2019, to follow the normal schedule. On January 17th, 2019, for a joint meeting with park commissioners and the planning board guiding the Milton Village in the Woff area. And that'll be a seven o'clock meeting here at the Council on Aging. Everyone all right with that? Are you okay with that? Item three, just do an approval on the minutes of February 13th, April 11th, August 13th, September 26th, and October 10th. Can I get a second on that?
Mr. Chairman, can we hold the minutes of the 26th? Just because there's one section that's about the Milton Project. I think it's really a summary of what Bill put in, and I think we could condense that one a little bit.
So take that as friendly. So that's amended. It's going to be February 13th, April 11th, August 18th, and October 10th of 2018. Okay?
So moved.
Go ahead, No. Go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, I was just gonna say on October 10th, I had, I had sent, it wasn't until this afternoon, but I sent you in some, some suggestions on the discussion of the Comcast licensing update. And the, it was, it was really just more clarification. And I can read the change if you want. Does that make sense?
Go ahead, do it.
So, so it says, Mr. Zulus presented an update on the current standing with, and I would just take our current standing with and say, presented an update on the Comcast of Milton LLC Comcast licensing, and then add negotiations and the recommendation from, and then just continue it on. And then in the last line on that page, where it says to work together to finalize a renewal license agreement, just say new instead of renewal license agreement. And then that's it.
Anything else? Anyone? Any further discussion? All good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item four, is anyone here for citizen speak tonight? Seeing none, we ran along. Item five. I'd like to begin with a moment of silence for our 41st President, George H.W. Bush, who died this past several weeks, two weeks ago now, as we all know, he was a native of this town. And I'd also like to include in this tonight that we're keeping our thoughts, Worcester firefighter Chris Roy, who was killed tragically in a fire two days ago. Thank you. And we want to wish all of our Jewish friends a very happy Hanukkah, as it ends, coming to an end there. We haven't meet, met during Hanukkah, but I wanted to mention that. And going back to the discussion here on the Bush room, we've had a book of condolence which has been in Town Hall since the day of the funeral, since the day, since the day he stood in National Warning. It's also been here at the Council on Aging. Personally, I think it would be nice to get as many residents who, we could get access to it, to sign it. Perhaps if there's a group in town that would like to have to come and take it for a day, or has an, you know, even like a religious, one of the churches or something who may want to sign it. And then when we're done with it, I don't think there's any rush that we send this to the Bush Library in Texas to be included in his, his memorabilia. I happen to be at the Senator Kennedy Institute last night, and you just think about how important it is to say things like this, and I think it'd be very nice to have this included in his, in his things. It's amazing the things that they have there from the Senator's life, just as in the JFK Library, so. As Katie remembers that day, and was trying to, pictures that are up here, that's the agent I talked to right there, and that's gonna suit you. The gentleman with the, with the goatee in the back is Dale Jenkins, who was, became the undersecretary of Public Safety. He was the advance man for the President's team, came here and did all the work with Jim Mullen. The funny thing that I remember, I don't recognize anyone else in that picture, but the funny thing that I do remember, and I'll stand up and show this, was that the DCR, the MDC at the time, the Commissioner Dave Balfour, brought the stage and the bucket. This, they wanted, they were insistent that they wanted stairs with a railing. And there was a, there's a carpenter who lives here in town, his last name is Conley, who came, and I still see him with a saw and everything, and he built those stairs and everything on that afternoon before, before the President's motorcade arrived. Does anyone else have any other, any other thoughts about this? Is that okay that we do this?
Yes, yes.
We might, we might have it at the library.
Yeah, there's another idea. Maybe we put it at the library for, and let them, so it's, you're right, people really want to come to Town Hall to pay their water bills?
Right.
No. Maybe it's an idea where people, put it somewhere where a lot of people go, because the library's, the library's a good idea.
Yeah, I'll talk to the director tomorrow. But if you don't see it at the library, it's in the main lobby at, at Town Hall, and it'll be there until this board decides to send it off to College Station, Texas. I think the library's a great idea. And there were over 150 people signed it here Friday at the Council on Aging, so it was nice that Mary Ann opened the doors to the book, and it's, you know, it's gonna be part of history, so, yeah, I think it's a great idea to send it to the library.
I still have to sign it, too. I have not made it up yet to sign it.
It's here, you can do it tonight before you go home. It's here. Okay, we're good? All right. So I'm going to go right to item six. We'll get into the tough stuff. It's a discussion of the FY '20 budgets. Our town accountant, Amy Dexter, is also here if we need her. We'll keep, I think she wants to stay in the bullpen for a little while, unless we have, she did Yormon's work this morning at the Capitol Meeting, so.
So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Very preliminary look at the FY '20 budget. What we did is we sat down and, and we looked at some of the larger items, some of the increases that we've seen, and I can walk through those. Group insurance is always a concern. The town currently has over 700 employees participating in group insurance, the majority of them roughly over 400 in the family plan. Family plan costs taxpayers about $18,000 a year currently. That we're, our agents have informed us that that may go up another 5% next year, so we need to budget for that. The individual plan, which we have almost 300 members on, is, is a little cheaper, and they don't anticipate that rising as much. But the, the group insurance being in the $10,400,000 number, we could see a 5% increase in that year over year, just the way health insurance costs are going. Another, one of the larger ticket items this year is general insurance. I reported to this board a couple of meetings ago that Maya, who's our general insurance carrier, had, had not done an assessment on many of the larger buildings in the town for quite some time. We knew about it, Consolidated Facilities Director Bill, Bill Ritchie knew about it. So the current value of the six schools and the public library, before they reassessed them, was nearly $120 million. That went to $190 million. Roughly $70 million increase, which will have to be carried as a premium of about $70,000, little over $70,000 in FY '20, in addition to a preliminary estimate in our general insurance going up about 7% on that, so. That's two of the larger ticket items. All of the collective bargaining agreements in town are up for negotiation in fiscal year '20, so as, as the calendar turns to 2019, both ourselves on the town side, as well as the school committee, will sit with, with these union groups. So we've put 2% wage set aside for those. Public Works, as I've talked probably too much about, the solid waste industry, that contract is up at the end of June this year, and we can anticipate, we have an expert in from Mass DEP, Kathy Merzer, who's at, at least predicting about $200,000, $300,000 increase in the, currently how, what we pay for recycling materials. So most people at home don't know, but it's probably about $50 or $60 to recycle a ton of material now. The current contract allows for the town to pay $17 of that, and the contractor pays the difference. We don't see that break, we don't see that breakdown going forward further. The haulers tend not to pick up that burden on the cost, so that, that cost may have to come from the taxpayers, but we'll, we'll see those numbers. We're probably heading into discussions and putting an RFP out for both the hauling and disposal of material. It's a five-year contract. We'll start on that shortly after the first of the year as well. One of the other things we wanted to bring up to speed is the warrant committee, two years ago, increased snow and ice control to $160,000 from $150,000. I think our running three-year average for snow and ice control is approximately $700,000. So what we're trying to do over the next two or three years is bring that initial number up to somewhere near $300,000. So the plan this year is to add $50,000 to that line, $50,000 the next year, should the warrant committee, this board, and town meeting approve it, and then get ourselves somewhere near $300,000 in the next couple of years and, and use that as a baseline. What happens most years is it's, it's a shell game. Town accountant has to move money around, reserve fund transfers to try to get to that snow and ice control number, because it's just, it's the nature of the beast. And again, the three-year average is about $700,000. So what we appropriate beginning of the year is not nearly enough at this time. So we're looking to move that number, that needle higher slowly, understanding that it's not a perfect science, but something that we need to look at. Just another, another small item is Parks and Recreation has an employee who's paid out of the revolving fund. That employee is now going to come out and go into the, the operational fund, so you'll see a sizable increase in the Parks and Recreation Department. Blue Hills Regional, as we all know, town meeting in last October approved some repairs, capital repairs. We see those costs in our operational piece. So the assessment that we get from Blue Hills, that capital cost that they have incurred that town meeting approved, will be embedded in their carryover number. So it's based on a per-student basis, but rough estimate, when we talked to their Assistant Superintendent for Business, Steve Moore, was about $50,000. And then I think one of the, one of the other numbers that, that we're gonna work through tomorrow, myself and the town accountant are gonna sit down with Superintendent Gormley and Assistant Superintendent Glenn Pavelcheck to go over their budget. Haven't had quite enough time to look through it yet, but I did see the warrant committee meeting the other night, where I believe the number the superintendent gave was 4.8% increase year over year. So those are some of the items. I can answer some more specific questions if you want, but I think the idea tonight was just to give some of the larger items. Obviously, the revenue estimates aren't in yet. The State House did do their revenue consensus report last year, last week, sorry. Representative Jeff Sanchez and a couple other members at the State House were quite happy with the revenues forecast for FY '20, and they've predicted anywhere from 2% to 3.4% increase. But they went on to then literally slam on the brakes, and they're cautioning revenue consensus numbers for FY '21 going forward. So we need to kind of walk cautiously this year and make sure that some of the stuff, if we do add things, it's stuff that's sustainable. And there are, just from, from the town side, there were some positions that were talked about, that we've been collecting job descriptions for arts and culture director from other communities, and we have a packet that we've distributed. That has not yet gone to the Personnel Board. We have taken two part-time positions to the Personnel Board, part-time parking enforcement officer, which they approved, and a part-time youth coordinator as a part of the, the short-term and long-term teen center issue. I think that's about it. Just some small stuff in our office. If, if you look at the selectmen's budget, you'll notice a sick leave buyback line. What we've done is we've, in the past, each department who had an employee who gave us a notice of intent to retire during the upcoming fiscal year, we would put that money in their line, and we decided to move that to the selectmen's office. You'll see a $30,000 number in there. That is $30,000 of sick leave buyback that would be due should three town employees who dedicated almost 80 years of service collectively follow through and retire in fiscal year '20. So we decided to just move that to the selectmen's budget. It's a moving target, obviously, every year, but it's something that we can start to allocate. That way, we don't get caught off guard. And the warrant committee rightly so, year, in years past, if they saw a large increase in the salary or wages, they'd ask why, and it gets a little uncomfortable when you're talking about retirement, and specifically, you know, I think it's a pretty personal issue. So if we just put it in here, you don't really necessarily ask who or why, or it's just something that we'll start to do. But I think that's about it from a 30,000-foot. The plan was to come back on the 26th and present all of the selectmen's budgets to this board for approval, so that we can send them on to the warrant committee. We have sent a draft to the warrant committee of all the material received, but just to keep the ball moving with them, understanding that if there is a February town meeting, they're gonna be inundated with numbers and articles. So open the floor to any questions or comments or observations.
I have a lot, but I'll go last. Go ahead.
Just one question, and it may be something for another meeting, but a few years ago, the town was self-insured and ran into an issue with the firefighter disability. Is that something that we need to take a look at? Because we don't want to be caught in that. And again, I don't mean to hit you with this, Mike, but it's just, when you mentioned insurance, it clicked into my mind, because it was, it was a situation that we had a financial issue with a few years ago, and, you know, if we can mitigate the, the risk, maybe just take a look at that.
I might ask the town accountant for a little help on that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this may not be the time. I just want to know if we need to take a look at it, that's all.
I think we're 10 years in on that.
Hi. I don't know the exact proper terminology, but that's been rectified, that in the event somebody gets injured on duty, we have different coverage to cover that. So we're not, we don't have that same exposure.
Great.
Cooking company came in after that incident. That's how cooking company came in.
Right, okay. I did not know that.
Great. Thank you.
Do you want me to stay in case there's more?
Stay there.
Okay.
Just in case.
Katie, anyone else?
I don't have a question, but, but for the snow and ice, for the benefit of people at home, because when you talk about, you know, our three-year sort of rolling average was 700K, but we're trying to get to three, and maybe if you just explain to people why we don't want to go up to 700?
Right, well, you can't go backwards, right? So that's a very good question. So we're eking our way closer to what we believe the average to be, knowing that if we go too high, that we, we can't take that money back, so.
Yeah.
Very good question, yes.
People are curious.
Yeah, and just to put it in perspective, my last year in Boston, we spent $44 million on snow and ice, so. $150,000 barely fills the salt shed these days, just with, with the way things go. And we do all, all this all thing on our own. It's the plowing equipment which we contract for, but that, very good question, thank you for asking it.
I don't have any questions.
So I have a couple. As you know, we had a Capitol meeting this morning, and currently we have about 100 million. Am I right in Capitol request?
Yes, 90 to 100 million.
90 to 100 million dollars in Capitol requests. So a couple of things. First off, on the operations side, in June of 2017, we passed a $3.1 million operational override. Am I correct in that, just on the budgets as they presented now, would be, was significantly above, up like a level dollar? Am I correct?
Yes.
So either we cut, and I, I don't, I mean, I'm not, someone mentioned the word override to me yesterday, there's just no way that you could do that. I just don't see it. But my concern is that, I just don't, I just don't know how you sustain this going forward. So let's just, let's take just, and on the Capitol side alone, the pressing matter is the fire stations. So at $25 million, and this is well on its way, if it's anywhere near the projected $25 million to build all three, you're talking, you can tell me where I go wrong, Amy, you're talking a million a year in principal, plus about another quarter of a million?
Yeah, assuming a 25-year life, we may be able to bond that longer than 25, but just to keep the math simple, a million alone in principal, plus 3% to 4% interest per year, so you're talking about 1.3, 1.4 million additional debt service expense per year.
And even though we potentially have the benefit of using Article 37, the Hurley Amendment, I don't think that's gonna come, looking at the numbers today, it's gonna come close to covering the entire thing. The true game changer is the potential donor that is out there, because even if that, even if potentially a $10 million donation came in, we're still talking about 15 million, is there one on this, three quarters of a million a year for 25 years to cover the rest of it? Is that with interest or?
I'm sorry, I wasn't.
No.
Say that again.
So if it's 15 million, I think it's three quarters of a million a year for 25 years.
Yeah.
With interest or, or plus interest? I think it's plus interest.
Yeah.
750 covers the principal. Then combine that with, the schools are clearly going to come for something of an expansion that's going to be at least a million, but I think in the end, it's probably gonna be closer to 2 million. You have the DPW that's on, sitting on the shelf, that's had a step, go ahead.
And you're just talking about Capitol.
Capitol, I'm not even, yeah.
Or when you say the public school expansion, what do you?
No, 2 million, just to go into, yeah, so if, if they just do an expansion of the top of the Cunningham Colicock Campus, you want to 2 million dollars. So you're gonna have to find a placeholder for that, put that in there. DPW, all of this, it just, I'm like, I mean, I'm used to budgets here, 10 years, I mean, I'm used to, but it's a significant hurdle to accomplish to maintain quality of life here and keep tax rates at, at an affordable level. There are people that every, some people can afford it, others can't, and you have to think about everyone. So I have, I am concerned that some of the numbers, particularly that large budget that just came in, and I, I do see that on the Capitol side, this is gonna have to take a lot of work to, to be able to do this. I don't think we can. With regard to Article 37, the Hurley Amendment, and you heard it today at the Capitol, I've heard at the Fire Station Building Committee, I think we really need to push this very hard, and we're gonna have to all work collectively when this gets on the ballot in the spring to get this passed, because without Article 37, a $25 million bill, even a 15 million bill, there's no other way without doing a, you'd have to do a debt exclusion override to do it, it's the only possible way. And the, and the difference between this and the School Building Committee, there's no 90% reimbursement as we got on the schools. This is all going to go on in the taxpayers' shoulders. And as you heard, the Chair of the Fire Station Building Committee say, as he, he said this morning to us, is if you look at the conditions of the fire stations that they're currently working in, and what the firefighters are being mandated with compared to the mission that they perform today in the 21st century, this is not something that we can just slip off a ledge, because we're never gonna get back there. And I really don't lose our momentum on this. So I just think that this is gonna be really tough, and my only thought, and I said this, I think, to you today, Amy, if we can't get on the operations side, because I don't know how we're gonna make this number, I just don't know how you're gonna do it without significant cuts. I mean, potentially, you're talking about some positions that were funded in this 2017, June 2017 override, that haven't been filled yet. So voters voted for that, and now they may lose it, because it's not filled, and we have to cut it, because we're trying to meet the demands that are being pressed on us today. Jobs like you just mentioned, potential jobs on the town side, they're up, how do we do that? So do we go back? Is it too late to go back? And I know this is a lot of work, it's heavy. Is it too late to go back and ask them to come back with a non-contingent or a contingent budget?
I think there's some balancing that has to be done on our end.
Think?
And again, the revenue, well, the, the early estimates, and again, this is preliminary tonight, this, we don't know where the revenues are gonna come in.
Not gonna be that high, though. Would you agree they're not, they're not gonna be that?
Correct. There is, there are going to have to be some cuts from the current budgets that were submitted. And that's, that's not unheard of in most years. We were very fortunate last year.
I know.
We, we had a very balanced budget. Everyone got what they asked for. So to answer your question, I, I think the budgets that were submitted just have to be trimmed down a bit, and then when we get some more concrete revenue numbers, everyone knows what they have to cut. It's a, it's a series of, of discussions, and again, but our first discussion with the school department will take place tomorrow. So again, preliminary, but I understand your caution. I, I appreciate it, I value it, but I think there's, there's a round of, of balancing that has to happen first, discussions.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Town Administrator, so this is my first year cycling through a budget process. Is it, is it customary for the schools to present to the board of selectmen their budget?
No.
No.
No, no, Warren Committee.
Yeah.
Warren Committee, no, no.
But they, can we just clarify that? Not to the board, but, I mean, the town administrator has a role now that changed a couple of years ago in the budget process, so the town administrator is responsible for presenting a budget to this board and to the warrant committee. So in that sense, they're, they're working with the town administrator, but they don't come in and present to us.
No.
Yeah, I might have misspoke. On the 26th, I'll present all of the selectmen's budget for approval to the warrant committee.
I see.
Yeah.
Mr., oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I just wanted to, just, you know, as Mike said, just to follow on, I, I understand the concern you're raising, Richard, with the big picture, but mo, as Mike said, last year was such an aberration. Most years, you're reducing the request. It may not be an actual cut to the budget if, if there, you know, if we have a 4.8% increase in one budget or another percentage like that in another, we might, you're just reducing the request. You may not actually be cutting below the, the current years, so I think we just have to keep that in mind, that a lot of years, we wind up reducing requests, so that, and we, we don't know what the revenue is gonna be. So it's so early in the process, I, I don't think we should go back and ask department heads for a contingent and non-contingent budget. We just had an override a little over a year ago, so.
I know.
I think that would be too premature.
A year? One year? When they're sitting here having this discussion, and the mic, go ahead, Michael.
No, so, so I agree that it, it may be premature to think about contingent or non-contingent, but one of the things that, that we did back 10 years ago when things were difficult, and you'll remember, Richard, when, when the economy was going through some tough times, we had the departments give level service and level dollar budgets.
Right.
And so you had, you had basically your level service or level dollar, sometimes there was a difference, right? And then you had your wish list.
Your wish list, right.
Right? And so to the extent we were able to fund things going forward, then we're able to put things back. So that, you know, that's the, I don't know if that's the process now.
It is, yeah.
Okay, so it's the same process?
Yeah, we're just not quite at that, at that yet.
Okay.
Because discussions are very preliminary, and we haven't really taken a deep dive into a lot of the specifics. I will say, most of the depart, all of the departments sent in some very good narratives, which the warrant committee and the subcommittees that ultimately review those, I really appreciate. So this, if you take a deep dive into the narratives, you'll see almost some of the wishes that might be in there, or what's the anomaly for the year, so.
And to Katie's point, if you, if you do it that way, you're not talking about cuts. You're, you're talking about, this is where we're starting.
Redux.
We're talking about where we're starting, and then what we can add to, you know, as opposed to starting here and cutting, you're starting here and adding, so, you know, it's a.
It's a true balancing act, yeah.
Could I also just mention that, you know, we now have a finance committee, so Melinda and I, and Mike and Amy have been working and meeting. We haven't gotten to the budgets. We were going to have that last week, unfortunately, I had a conflict and had to ask that the meeting be canceled, but we haven't really talked, we've talked generally about a lot of what Mike mentioned earlier, the snow and ice, but we haven't delved into the budgets line by line, but that was our intent to do that. I don't know if we'll be able to do it before the 26th at this point with the holidays, but, but, you know, we'll be working a little bit with the, with the town administrator and the accountant on some of that also, and reporting back to the board.
So one of the things, last things I want to ask you tonight is if, I'd like to just look at this list, figuring the town side. I mean, these, this is what we went out and fought and asked the voters to fund, and they did. I just want to make sure that we're filling and funding the things, the line items we had here, and that they're getting what they voted for, before we move forward anywhere on this. I think, I think that, when you go out and fight for an override, and I know it was, it was David, Katie and I who did this, were here for this last one, as you were, Michael, but you're, you're painting the picture of need, or framing the picture of need to the residents, and why they need it, and how it affects their quality of life, and why they want to vote for this, and you're frightened of, to maintain the life that they expect, or the services they expect in this town, whether they're here for a year or they've been here for 60 years. here for a year or they've been here for sixty years. And that's, you know, when I looked at this and I said, some of these aren't even, we're only one year out, and some of these aren't even funded yet, uh, filled, I think we wanna ensure that we are meeting what the taxpayers voted for us to do moving forward. Does that sound all right?
Yeah, that's a great point. Yeah, just the room we sit in, the outreach coordinator for council and aging, we filled that position. Chief procurement officer, we filled that position. Um, environmental coordinator, filled that position. Conservation agent, quasi. Um, but yeah, to your point, the two police officers that were funded in that, uh, we have four police officers in the academy right now because we lost four in the meantime, so those two positions technically haven't been funded yet. So I, I understand your concern to make sure that we fund those first because that's what the override asked for, and then make sure that that's not part of the reduction piece.
So just to be clear, Mike, we're, we're replacing the four that either retired and adding two new additional.
Correct.
So we're increasing our ranks by two police officers.
That came out of this.
That was, that was a annual town meeting in two thousand seventeen, and just in getting people in the academy and
Sure.
to working through the list, there are still two vacancies. Uh, we wanna make sure, if I'm hearing the chair correctly, that they are funded as a part of FY twenty and don't become one of the reductions because it was part of the override.
Of course. Makes sense.
And, and whatever else is in that?
Yeah, we'll qualify that whole list for you.
Qualify this list.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to set off all the fire alarms, but I just, um, you usually have to have an override. You think, okay, I can breathe for two years, three years. I mean, last time we made it eight years. And, and doing so, though, extending like, had been like five-year lives, doing level doll, level service, um, for multiple years, and having departments submit wish lists and one-time purchases, and, and doing that to, to, to keep the ship upright moving forward. It's just awful fast to be doing this right now. So I think we need to, um, you know, people talk about the economy, and I, I don't think I've been at a meeting yet. We heard it today. Um, one of the capitalists called it the, the next great recession. You know, the hiccup is going to come here. It's just going to come. And, and Katie will remember this. I think it was two thousand and nine. It was at that time the largest override in the town's history, and I think a month later, the governor came with all those nine C cuts, and we took, saw just about every doll in that override used to protect all the cuts that came associated with that, with that recession. So um, I just need to think that we're gonna have to roll up our sleeves this year, and credit to you, Amy, and it's only my second time, but I'm familiar with capital from being at the requesting side. People forget about that, how important capital is. And there was a time here in this community where there wasn't any capital, and nothing was getting fixed, and nothing was getting bought or purged. And so um, even to the point of our schools, high schools, ten, at least ten, if not more than, I mean, people say, oh, Milton, you have all those schools. Well, those new schools are, they're teenagers now, you know, they're not, they're not kids walking anymore, so. Okay. You good?
I am, yeah. No, I, I, I appreciate your concern. It's, again, last year was, we were very fortunate last year. It, it's tough the year after everyone gets everything they asked for, right?
We had some state money last year that really helped out.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And you don't anticipate receiving the same amount this year as you did in prior year?
I don't unless the governor runs for reelection every year.
I agree. I agree.
No, but I, I will say that they, they are committed to that revenue consensus number. I was with the DLS representative the other day who said that the Baker-Pelito administration, they are adamant that whatever the revenue consensus number comes to, they're gonna give that to cities and towns. So um, I, I do applaud them for that. It's, they're, they're committed to it, and they, they have, haven't backed down on their word, so.
That was Sean Cronin?
Yes, yeah. So we'll see where it all works out. Again, preliminary, a lot of discussions to be had, and we'll see where the revenue numbers come in. Still amazed excise tax goes up every year, but.
Don't leave it. I might have one more question on the next thing, so don't, then you can go. Oh, you gotta go. No, go ahead. I forgot. You wanna go somewhere, just. If you have to go, go. I can answer this, okay. Okay, we good? Okay. Um, item seven, which is discussion approval of the February twenty nineteen special town meeting. Want me to speak, want, want to talk to the fire pot first, or does someone else, you want me to do it first? Well, that's the big one, so I'll.
So Mister Chairman, I think, is the discussion mainly gonna be about the fire building project? Okay, so I think I'll step out because I'm, just for the record, I'm recused on anything that relates to bonding, and this is a project that at least in part will be bonded, so.
Okay.
There's other articles I know with the library. I'll come back for that, but for the fire portion, I'm gonna step out.
Good. So you, you wanna follow? No, we'll, we'll, let's show the fire first, and then Katie can come back and then.
Well, but I'm recused from that.
All right, go ahead. All right. Okay. So as Amy knows, the fire station building committee came and presented to Capitol this morning. They are ready to make their first request, which would be about two point seven million, um, at a special town meeting, which will be, to, to be held in February twenty-fifth. Some of the dilemmas in this are obviously if the Hurley Amendment passes, um, trying to get the depreciations from the monies that are becoming surplus from the paid-down library and school debt to be used for the fire station building project as designed in the legislation. Just updated one, just the debt for this year alone, two thousand nineteen is sixty-six thousand, twenty-twenty is another hundred forty-three thousand. That alone isn't enough to cover the two point seven. But one of the things that, and Amy was very good today about um, pressing the, uh, Dan Clark, the vice chair of the fire station building committee, who, who wrote the proposal for this, is that um, how could we pay this? You know, first off, they won't need the whole two point seven in nineteen, they wouldn't need the whole two point seven in twenty, but we just wanna place mark the architecture and get them to hire their project manager. I, I'm not sure what the Capitol Committee's going to do. We haven't deliberated yet, it might be safe and say. Some of the thoughts, though, outside of if thirty-seven passes is um, the ability to perhaps, there's somewhere between a hundred fifty and a hundred ninety thousand in surplus from the Hendry's demolition that we put in that, finding a way potentially to repurpose that money to go towards this. I, I, we don't know exactly yet how it could be done, but it was brought up today. It's, it's a possibility. Another thought is using someone in a short term, am I, am I?
So, one, one of the questions that was asked today is, they're asking for funding for all three stations, all at once. So the Capitol Committee has a daunting task in front of it of how you fit that or staggering the build within the capital plan, because we have to try to coordinate that when the school and library debt starts to roll off the debt service schedule. So there's a lot of work to be done and a lot of deliberation to figure out how much, if any, we can fit into the model short-term, because this wasn't on the radar for two thousand nineteen, and now this February town meeting, they're asking for two point seven million. So we need to figure out how to do that. So one of the questions was asked was, well, what's your real cash flow? Because maybe we could give enough now.
To get to say headquarters.
As a band-aid to get to the next stage, because their plan was to ask for the design, architecture, and the owners, OPM, owners, I forget, project manager, cost all upfront for all three stations, and then come back in the fall of two thousand nineteen to ask for the funding for the construction. The thing is, it's kind of what comes first, the chicken or the egg. You really don't know the scope of the construction costs without the design and architecture. So you really need to get that done first, and we wouldn't wanna ask town meeting to approve a project that we don't have concrete plans for. So they're asking for the design upfront so that they don't lose more time, and that they can start that design phase. Then, in the event that we do find some funding sources, I don't know if there are any, like in the form of grants or something like that, or what is considered shovel-ready, we have plans. You won't get any grant money in the event there ever is any.
If you're not shovel.
If you're not shovel-ready. So that's one thing that the Capitol Committee has focused on a lot over the last couple of years, is um, as one of the members mentioned, there, years ago, I think she said back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, there were grants from FEMA to put into construction of fire stations. But even had we gone forward in two thousand nine, we didn't have any kind of plan, so we wouldn't have been eligible. So that's one thing. So we've talked about and asked the committee, how can you break up that two point seven to get you where you need to be for, to know what your ask at fall, for fall town meeting would be. So I think that's kind of what the Capitol Committee has to deliberate. So we've thrown out, depending upon what those numbers are, there is a portion that they want in February for two thousand nineteen. That wasn't on the Capitol Committee's radar for two thousand nineteen, so it puts a little wrinkle in things. So some ideas, excess surplus funds from the, from the demo that we thought we were gonna need that we didn't. Potentially using some of the free cash. The other issue is if, if, it gets tricky with the bonding because if you don't have an approved project, you can't bond, design, and architecture more than five years, because you don't know if the project's ever gonna materialize. So the thought is you don't really have a life longer than five years of those plans without funding for the rest of the project. So in the event the Capitol Committee said, okay, we're gonna recommend the full two point seven, town meeting, Warren Committee, everybody approves the recommendation. If something happens, now you're looking at bonding two point seven over five years. That's, that's probably not what we wanna do either. So it's, it's a tricky, it's a tricky game of how do we fit it into the model. So we, we being, the Capitol Committee really needs along with um, town administrator input, because first, his recommendation will go to the Capitol Committee, and that's where our deliberations start. So all of those parties as a group really need to kind of strategize how, how this can be funded in a timeline that makes sense, that the town can afford without putting this huge burden on the operating budget. I don't know if I exactly answered your question, but it's hard to answer where the funding is gonna come from because that's the question of the day. Like, that's a lot of money.
Was I right? Am I, was the minimum number that they thought would work and did, I wrote it down, six hundred thousand would work in nineteen?
They thought if they got at fall town meeting, six hundred thousand to spend between fall town meeting, I, I'm sorry, between February town meeting and fall town meeting, that that would be enough to get significant design plans done to know what the true costs of the construction are. Because right now, the true cost of construction that we're carrying is an estimate. And until you know what you're building, you can't make that more of a more refined number. That's probably not the right word, but um.
Okay. Question.
So, so um, is, are they asking for an appropriation of two point seven million?
Yes.
Okay, so they're asking for an appropriation of two point seven million for design and architecture of all three stations?
That's the whole project.
And the project manager, yes.
And the project manager, okay. Um, and, and, and is, can we have design and architecture of the three stations when we don't know where they're gonna go?
It's only one, it's only one, yeah, it's only one, but they know, they have the, they know what the design of the building and the size will be, it's just finding the location where they're gonna put it.
So it doesn't matter what location, we're gonna put the same building, doesn't matter what location?
Right, a single-engine substation. So they know the dimensions, they know the size, it's just the question.
So it's always gonna be the same than where, where it goes. Okay, all right. And so now they're, so now you said, they're, so, so um, does, does it make sense? I mean, you talked about, Amy, about piecemealing it. If, if we're talking about um, starting with Central, right? I mean, I, I heard at some point, starting with Central, does it make sense to try to say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna start with Central, we need appropriation of X dollars?
Six hundred thousand, yep.
Is that what the six hundred thousand is, is Central?
They have given that to us because I've worked closely with Dan Clark um, over the last couple of weeks with what I thought would be helpful to the Capitol Committee in his presentation. And one of the things I stressed to him was we need to know cost by station, cost by what phase you're talking about, and a cash flow.
Right.
Because we need, we can't project out the debt service. Just because you have an appropriation today of twenty-five million, you're not gonna spend it all on day one, so you're not gonna borrow it all at the same time. You're gonna borrow it as you need it.
Right.
So that cash flow is critical, and potential other financing sources is critical too. So have you looked into other grants? Have you looked into other things? So those are all things, those are all things that the Capitol Committee are gonna talk about. We talked about that today. What happens if you don't get it? What happens if you don't get anything for February and it waits till May? Well, that's critical. Losing those three months is critical to the process. What happens if you only get enough to do the, the headquarters? And we look at the next piece if you don't do all the stations at once. So we're asking all of those hard questions, and that's where the Capitol Committee and the town administrator's job is gonna get really tricky because they're asking for A, and then more than likely, the recommendation might be
B.
Something different from A.
But you're looking into a piecemeal process where we say, okay, we'll do Central, we'll do the architecture for Central, we'll, we'll start the project on Central, and then we'll go back and do um, engine two, and we'll go back and do Atherton Street. So, so, because that, that, that's almost a, that, that's, you know, in the abstract, I haven't been involved in these discussions, but in the abstract, that seems like kind of a, a piecemeal roadmap that you could follow, right?
Right, and those are all things that we're, we'll be talking about, all things we've talked about today. Um, the Capitol Committee, and, you know, I've been involved with them since two thousand and ten.
When it was, when it was restarted.
Yeah, when there were, it's now nine members, and we have, it's, it's a very thoughtful and thorough group. They fully vet all of the requests, and this one will be no different, and they, I think everyone, not to put words in their mind, everybody on that committee, I think, understands the condition of the stations and the importance that they're addressed. It's now we struggle with how do we do that without disrupting the level of service that the, the town residents
Expect.
Expect and deserve.
And if they need an appropriation, a nineteen appropriation of six hundred thousand, say, um, where does that come from other than bonding?
That's what I'm saying, if you repurpose the Hendry's.
So that's about a hundred and fifty.
Sixty-six from, if you pass Article thirty-seven, you get seven, almost seventy thousand there.
So two-twenty.
So you have, you're almost half, you're almost half.
And then you bond the other half, is that?
Either that, you take out a free cash, this is boss of bills.
Or you don't give the full six.
Right.
Those are
Right.
all a really, really difficult decisions that the Capitol Committee and, I mean, the Capitol, Michael will make his recommendation, then the Capitol Committee will vet that, and then that recommendation will go to the Board of Selectmen and the Warren Committee, and they'll vet that even further. So we have a lot of work to do in a very short period of time. So I think at this point, we're gonna be looking at the two point seven.
Right.
Obviously, we have to factor in the construction because we need to know the danger of saying we're gonna bond it without an approved project is that two point seven, if you have an approved project, can be borrowed over twenty-five years.
Can we spend?
As opposed to five years.
Can we spend the free cash for nineteen in nineteen?
Yes, if you appropriate it at a, at a fall town meeting, as long as it's been certified, which it's been, so we're spending the eighteen free cash.
Right, we're spending the eighteen now, but if we, if we have a, if we have a February town meeting, we can spend the nineteen.
No, we, there's no free cash for nineteen yet.
Right, so we have to wait until twenty, no?
We, so the June thirtieth of two thousand eighteen certified free cash is the one point nine number that just came out from the DLS.
Right, okay.
That's not appropriated yet.
So it'll be the eighteen money.
It's the eighteen number, which we usually say we appropriate eighteen for use two years, in twenty.
Usually in twenty, usually in twenty, right.
But you could appropriate it if you have a town meeting saying it's for fiscal nineteen, you could do that in February.
Got it, okay.
So some tough decisions that I think several parties will be involved in making a decision on.
Right.
In a very short amount of time.
And it were, the, the number for free cash is one point nine?
Yes.
And just.
And there's also a lot of asks for that one point nine.
There always are, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And just the, the final thing I'll leave you with before we take a motion is that this is like one of the critical pieces of public safety. this is like one of the critical pieces of public safety in this town. This is fire stations, which shows how difficult, I mean, this is, this is difficult just on fire stations, it's, it's very, very tough, so. Thank you for this, thank you for staying.
No problem. And if anyone's wondering on the condition, you can just visit one of them.
Oh, I know.
They'd be more than happy to show you. Yeah, they're bad, so.
So, the only articles, and you can update if I'm wrong, so there's the library article, the Fire Station Building Committee article, and that's it.
The Treasurer has two housekeeping articles, and the Planning Board have two housekeeping articles, but in the, we have yet to get a citizen's petition, but we would have to set a date. If this board approves the February Town Meeting for February twenty-fifth, I think there was discussion about making it one night so as not to impose too much on the Warrant Committee. The four housekeeping issues, articles I just mentioned, could be put off until May. This board can select town-sponsored articles, what can go on and can't go on a special town meeting, but cannot if it is a citizen's petition. We did get one request through the Warrant Committee, wondering when the cutoff date was, so there could be a citizen's petition which would have to be heard on the twenty-fifth.
Okay. So, I'd entertain a motion to approve the special town meeting for February twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth of twenty nineteen, but we wanna try and keep this to the twenty-fifth.
I think, I think our colleagues, I think they were
You wanna go and vote on this, right? You wanna vote on it? Yes.
Maybe we can talk about the other, the other articles with them here.
She has to recuse on the, the library one, that's why she went up.
Okay.
So, have you decided?
Well, I
We have a motion.
Yeah, there are other articles, so, oh, sorry.
And Melinda, you have to recuse on library as well? No, no, all right, okay, all right, all right. So, the, so the only other article is the library article, and then, thank you, Amy. And then if we get a citizen petition, but, and I told the Capitol Committee, we really wanna keep this to the twenty-fifth one night, if we can do it just one night, or just, just get it done.
So, so, it sounds like, I mean, is, is the library article time-sensitive? I, I, I seem to remember there is some, some time sensitivity to them.
Yeah, and the Director reached out to me Monday after their board meeting and asked if this town meeting was gonna take place, they would like to get on the February Town Meeting.
Because then they can, they can save money, they can save, if they can get this thing teed up to get sold, they can save money on operating it for another year, another six months, or something like that, okay?
Correct.
So, there's some, some time sensitivity, sensitivity to that. And I saw something about a school article, is that?
So, I have that, I have a place mark for that, but they've not, I talked to Glenn last week on it, I've not, they may pull that for this meeting, they may hold that off till the spring.
So, then in terms of time sensitivity, we're talking about the fire article and, and, and the library article?
That's it, and potentially a citizen petition article.
Yeah, should that materialize?
Should one materialize.
Do we know, do we know of one?
There was a question today through the Warrant Committee clerk from a constituent, wondering when the cutoff date for this town, town meeting filing would be. And I said, it all depends on the vote tonight, whether there is one. So, if there is one, then that date will be published when they have to be filed with this board, at which point that will be relayed to the constituent.
I guess that's a question, do, do we have to publish notice, and can we cut, can we open, you know, can we decide it's gonna be Friday? Or, because obviously, if, I mean, I am really not in favor of having a February special time meeting because of the impact on the Warrant Committee and their budget process. But if the, you know, I was accused of the fire article, if it's necessary for that, I think we would, we'd want to keep it to one night, as you said, and try to discourage other articles, and just put on what we think can be managed within one night. So, do we need to publish notice of a special town meeting?
I'd have to ask Town Council. I know January fifth has been filed as the advertisement date for the annual town meeting, which has to be published, but I'm, I'm not sure about the special.
So, if we pass this motion tonight for February twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, the idea, notion of keeping it to the twenty-fifth, can we approve a warrant closing date for, say, this Friday, this Friday the thirteenth or the fourteenth? Can we, can we do, can we close it on Friday the fourteenth?
Or next, or next week, I mean, I just meant like a short, maybe Friday's too soon, but a short deadline to.
Yeah, the two, the two articles that you're talking about now, fire building and, and Kidder Library, they're, they're written. The Kidder Library one was submitted in the spring for annual town meeting, and everybody's received a copy of, of Chair Walsh's Fire Building Committee one, so they're, they're ready to go. I could talk to Town Council tomorrow and see if it's.
So, how about then Friday the twenty-first, if it's okay with town, pending the approval of Town Council, then all right with it?
Yeah, I mean, the question is, do we even need a warrant closing date, or can we just decide tonight, we're going to have it just for these handful of articles that have already been submitted, and we're not going to take any additional articles from town departments?
I'm fine with that.
It was a question for Town Council, I think.
So, if Town Council said we could do that, would we need to have taken a vote on it, though?
We're gonna need to take a vote on it tonight, so I'm thinking that we maybe vote to close it pending advice, you know, council, pending a recommendation from Town Council, if not, go with the date that he suggests. How's that? Would that work? We voted tonight, so it's done?
Yeah, like a tentative vote, like maybe no later than a certain date, if necessary.
No later than Friday the twenty-first?
So, I, I, so on that motion, so I'd make a motion to approve the warrant closing date tonight, the special town meeting, contingent with any change recommended by Town Council. Is that all right? You don't want that, oh, you
No, 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 I'm, so we're gonna approve, the motion is to approve a special town meeting for February twenty-fifth, fifth and twenty-sixth, and then the second motion would be to
Close the warrants of tonight.
I thought we only needed one night.
You're doing it just in case, whether it snows, or when you had, you know, just, so you have them both posted, just in case something happens. Earthquake.
And just another question, have they, are you saying the dates have been cleared with the moderator and the clerk?
It has, yeah.
So, on the motion, on the motion to approve the special town meeting, I'm convinced that there is a need for the Fire Station article, that it will be very beneficial to the town, that, that we need to get going on that, and that it's important to do it in this fiscal year for the purposes of both starting the project and also the, the impact on the Hurley Amendment as well. So, I'm convinced that it's important to do it, we should do it. I, I think, I think it, it will save the town money, could save the town money, and could be beneficial to have the library warrant article as well. So, I think there's a reason to do that, that reason is not as strong, and without the Fire Station article, I might not be in favor of that, because I think that the cost is, the saving, the money savings are a little bit speculative on the, on the library side, but they are, the Kidder side, but they are possible. So, I'm in favor of the article for those reasons, or the motion for those reasons.
Didn't we also have, I know you don't want, we don't wanna encourage more, but we had a couple, I thought they were housekeeping articles from the Planning Board as well as the Treasurer.
He just said they're gonna be put off till May.
Oh, the Planning Board's gonna put off?
Well, if, we're trying to get everything into that one night, I'm not sure if, if a bylaw change would lead to too much discussion, or, I mean, we, we could potentially put, the housekeeping ones for the Treasurer can certainly wait till, till annual town meeting.
I thought that the, I remember talking to the Planning Board chair, who thought that the one about the traffic mitigation, which would amend, the one we just passed in October, that that could potentially apply to some large projects that are pending if we got that one done sooner rather than later. So, it might make sense to add that, if it's
Sorry, so, wanna amend that, wanna take that as a friend who will put a placeholder for that just in case, and that's it?
Yeah, just the Planning Board traffic mitigation article.
So, can I have a second on this?
I'll second.
Okay, oh, you made it.
Oh, did I make it?
I made it, I made it.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
I just wanna be clear on what it is that we're voting on. We're voting to submit the Fire Station article and
The library, and send the library one back.
You have to schedule the special time meeting.
And to, and to schedule the time meeting for the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
So, I'm in favor of scheduling the town meeting, I'm in favor of the Fire Station Building Committee. We're taking and then, you know, a vote on the Kidder Library article, authorizing town meeting to authorize a sale. I'm, I'm opposed to that.
Well, we can authorize, all we're doing is allowing them to go before town meeting.
Right, but I'm saying, I understand that distinction, but I'm saying, as a board, if we're voting whether or not, you know, we're in favor
I'm not voting in favor, I'm not, I get that, no, we're just voting
Just including it in the warrant.
Including it in the warrant.
Fair enough, right.
And so, does that go in the first motion or the second motion?
He did it as both, I think he did both, I think he included both.
No, I think, yeah, I think just, just to approve, the first one's just to approve the town meeting, the dates.
Got it.
And then the second one, if we wanna, I think the second one is just to close the warrant date, and do we wanna specify the articles? I don't know that we need to.
I don't, I don't think that we need to.
I don't know.
I don't think we need to, I mean, we've got those two already to us, we just put a placeholder for the Planning Board. I've not heard I have the letter for Kemp. But when I followed up with Glenn, they're gonna get back to me on this, I mean, you can put a placeholder there for this, but I, I don't
The schools?
I think they wanna move it to May. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, I, what do you, okay, all right. I'm gonna jump forward to Sarah on Article Nine, which is an update in the Youth Task Force with the Chair Sarah Kelly. And no comeback to, Jen told me forget to come back to, I, I don't need, cuz that may take a little while. Good evening, sorry for the
That's okay, thank you. That's kind of a tough act to follow, budget talk. Mine is happy, mine's about kids. Thank you for moving me up, I have a babysitter at home, I appreciate it. And, and thank you for, for having us, and for, I just wanna reiterate, thanks for even making the appointments to the, the task force. It's a great group of people that we have, that get together and meet, talking about the youth of Milton. Everybody has a real sincere concern and dedication to the issue, and so I'm, I'm just very grateful that you all continue to keep this at the forefront of what's going on in town. So, my, my update is going to be brief, though I'm happy to answer any questions and talk about any, anything specifically you have questions about. I just wanna let you know what we've been up to since the task force was formed and appointments were made in July. We've had five meetings, and are following the charge that, that was put together, which I'll just read to you as a reminder, in case you don't have it memorized, to explore expanded opportunities and safe spaces for teens ages eleven to eighteen, to socialize and be productive in our community, including but not limited to out-of-school time programming, and to make recommendations based on the results of such work for the consideration of the Select Board. And that's, that's what we've been working on. So, just to kind of recap, some of this is gonna be repetitive, because it's what got us to even ask for a task force to be formed, but we know that sort of the problem was identified by a number of different groups. We had, first and foremost, the, the Public Library who came and sat before you to talk about overcrowding in the, in their teen room, their, their, their teen room in the library, primarily by middle schoolers, primarily in the after-school hours. You have Milton Youth Advocates, a group of local parents and others, who are got together primarily out of concern for options for older teens, primarily in the evening, weekend hours. This group started meeting about a year ago. We have the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, who back in two thousand sixteen, from their community assessment, showed a need to reduce youth feelings of stress, depression, and boredom, factors that students report as why they use substances. The Coalition then identified a priority to enhance positive social opportunities in the community for youth on their days off from school. We have the Master Plan, which in multiple locations cites community members' desire for places to congregate, both for adults and then especially for teens, whether it's in the form of a teen center or something like that. And then we have Milton teens, who have expressed through the survey that Milton Youth Advocates put into the schools back in the spring, that they are looking for a place to hang out, they want more hangout space, place to, and this comes directly from the survey, place, a place to play games, like video games, ping pong, board games, pool, they want a place to work on life school, life skills, help with stress management, job prep, cooking, college support, and goal setting. So, we know that we have a need to address some problems with what is available to our youth in Milton. But we are doing a lot already, we know that. We have great vibrant sports leagues, they are almost consistently running at capacity and very often with wait lists. We have a great Parks and Rec Department that runs, specifically runs middle school programming, usually one-off type activities in the evening and sometimes after-school hours. And we have a strong culture of volunteerism, we have many of our youth sports leagues that are run by volunteer, by parents who volunteer. We have parents who lead scouting troops, they run theater programs and, and offer other opportunities to youth. We have great nonprofit partners here in the community that are actively seeking ways to engage teens. We have the MAC and the Forbes House Museum, both of whom have, have specifically run programs to get more teens in the door at low or no cost in those hours that, where we don't seem to have other options. So, we know we have a lot, and then we, we obviously have our middle school and high school, who run various clubs and programs in the after-school hours, in addition to their competitive and non-competitive sports programs. So, it's not for a lack of programming. We know that we have lots of great things going on, but there are, even with that, we, we also know that we have some, some issues there that could be addressed. Not all of the timing works for all of our teens. For example, the Pierce after-school activities usually end sometime around three fifteen, three thirty. So, you figure from three fifteen to three thirty until six-ish, when an adult might be in the house, that's a long time where kids may not have a place to go, which is why they go to the library. We know that even though there's great programming, it may not appeal to everybody, right? Not everybody is going to sign up for every opportunity that's out there. Some things take place maybe once or twice during the week. So, even, even if kids are participating, they're not necessarily engaged every day after school or every evening. And we know that not all teens in Milton can afford to participate in the types of programming that's out there. So, that's, that's a real issue and a need that needs to be addressed. So, again, we have lots of great programming, even with all of that, we don't have a space that is dedicated to teens, allowing them a place to decompress, a place to be social, that is not school-related, and that's not offering strictly programmed time and structured time. So, we sort of go back to that original set of problems that a number of our constituents here in town have identified. So, the work that the task force has been doing for the past several months, Phase One was to really focus on trying to alleviate the strain on the teen room, the teen librarian at the, the public library. So, that was first and foremost what we were working on. A number of people, many of us, many of you sitting here, and myself and others, focused on basically reaching out to anybody in the community we could think of. That was Milton Public Schools, that was the, the Council on Aging, the various nonprofits. We visited the existing buildings in town that we thought might be able to host teens, like the, the Red Building on Kelly Field and the Kidder Building included. Either, either folks are at capacity and can't offer anything more, even, even empty space, or the facility may not even be in condition to, to have teens come in and use it. We met with the Personnel Board earlier this fall, so even if we had been able to come up with a space, we were talking about adding a temporary part-time employee for this academic school year that could have addressed, you know, actually sort of operating something, a drop-in space for teens. That was pretty well received, we had a job description that, that, that was sort of in the process of being looked at. But space is the issue, space continues to be the issue. So, that's, that's sort of the big takeaway after what I'm calling Phase One of the work that we've done. We are shifting gears so that we're not sort of spinning our wheels trying to come up with this short-term solution, because it, it's just, it just doesn't seem to be there. Obviously, we'll look at anything that, that might open up as a possibility. But basically, you know, we know that space is the number one, the number one barrier to us finding a short-term solution. Couple of things that did come out of all this work, though, is we know lots of feedback that what would be helpful to families is, we have all this programming, but we, we really don't have one coordinated database or clearinghouse of everything that's out there. So, a suggestion would be that somehow we work as a community to, to create that, not exactly sure where that should land, but it would be great if that, that one coordinated database or catalog existed. Also be helpful to have a town-wide scholarship or some unified approach to financial assistance, assistance for all teens, so that any program that's being offered can be accessed equitably. being offered can be accessed equitably by, by anybody.
We're doing, we're in the process of doing that now.
Great.
Already.
Um, so, and then again, um, the, the task force is now focusing on a long-term solution. So, um, again, if, if things come up that seem like they could be a good fit for the short term, we will certainly look at them, but, but the majority of our, our efforts as a group will be focused on the, um, the long term. Um, so what that will look like, we, um, we have, we had a great meeting on Monday night and another one scheduled for Monday, where we're, we're really starting to get into the meat of that work. So, um, the three topics that we're focusing on at this point are, um, looking at best practices in youth programming, not just what does a teen center look like, but, but, you know, what is it that, from the different perspectives, um, especially those that are represented on the task force, what do we know is important about, um, how we, how we, how we take care of kids, how we run programs for kids, how we offer space for, for teens? We're looking at best practices in the youth programming, um, what other teen centers look like and how they were set up. Um, we're in the process of scheduling site, a number of site visits. Um, and then we'll, we'll continue to conduct further needs analysis right here in town. So, we'll be, um, looking at, at providing opportunities for youth and community members to give input, um, through focus groups, different types of public forums, however, that's to be determined. Um, and, and first and foremost, again, those, those site visits that we're, um, setting up, we're looking at, as a group, um, coming up with, you know, a real solid questionnaire, so that as each person goes out and makes a visit, or each group goes out, we're all, we're comparing apples to apples. There's so much good information out there. Um, we, we don't want to have to recreate the wheel here, but we want to make sure that we're asking the right set of questions to the right people, um, and then, and that everybody's doing, using that same tool. So, that's kind of, um, that's neck, that's the very next step. Um, I wanted to just, um, update you from our perspective on the, the thirty thousand dollar, um, state grant that was awarded, um, by Rep. Driscoll to the town, um, which we are very appreciative of. Um, that is housed in the Planning Department. Um, they have reached out to the task force to identify places where we might be able to give input, so that when they are, when they go out to architect firms for feasibility, feasibility study, um, they know what, what it is that they should be asking. So, this, again, the task force will be working on basically a February fifteenth deadline, getting to, um, to folks in the Planning Department, what some of the programming needs would be, um, for, for, for an architecture firm, to be thinking about, um, what do teens, specifically in Milton, want and need. Um, so that's the, that's the update. Um, you know, again, I, I, a, a big thank you to you all. Um, this is, this is a really great group, and I think, um, one thing that continues to, um, make me feel gratified in the, the work that we're doing is that every conversation I have with friends, with people around town, um, I'm just continually reminded that this is important to people, um, and that, you know, so many people talk about things in their youth that made a big impact on them. Very often, it's the type of thing that we're thinking of, um, you know, it may look different in different communities, but some kind of place, um, that teens have, that is theirs, that, um, where they can, you know, be together and be supported in making healthy decisions, um, and that's really what, you know, what's driving this process. So, that's where we're at. So, I'm happy to answer any questions or.
One question I had for you. You mentioned that thirty thousand dollars that Rep. Driscoll had secured.
Yep.
So, that's been allocated towards something very specific, yes?
Um.
It's more of a feasibility.
More of a feasibility study.
A feasibility study?
Yep.
Okay. And we can afford that with the?
We think we can.
Okay.
The feasibility, it's, we don't have to pay for it. He's, the, 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 um, grant pays for the entire study, all thirty thousand. You mean that we can afford?
We've been, we've been given thirty thousand dollars by the state.
By the state.
To apply towards this very specific item.
Right.
Have we identified how we can spend the thirty thousand dollars?
Yes, we're working on the specifics of that. Um, as, uh, Sarah alluded to, the group over the next couple of months is going to come up with specific parameters for the RFP, when the Chief Procurement Officer puts it out there, so that we can limit the scope and know exactly what they're looking for. There was a, uh, great study done in Situit recently. Um, it was a, they cast a wider net, um, but in talking to them, that I, preliminarily, I didn't think thirty thousand dollars was going to get us much.
That's my concern.
Yeah, it, it does. I, I was pleasantly surprised in that conversation with the folks that worked on the Situit feasibility study and site location work, uh, that thirty grand should get you, uh, pretty good, pretty good report to take a look at. And an even better report that, that the ability of the Youth Task Force to drill it down further, so that when the RFP goes out, it's more specifically, um, you know, for a teen center, not necessarily what type of land do you have and what can you build there, right? Just, this is specifically what we're looking for, and they can narrow down the square footage and find the right parcel and, you know. Um, so, to answer your question, thirty thousand dollars, surprisingly, will get us a, a good amount.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah.
That's great.
And that's where the, what the needs analysis is that we're continuing with, is to get more specifics about what our community needs and wants, rather than what, what Situit may have wanted, which could look very different.
I like that idea about the questionnaire and putting that together. I mean, I think that's fantastic. I mean, that really, really streamlines all that information, so you can make a, a great comparison. Um, I know you mentioned that you already have, or you will be reaching out to other, um, towns that have, so Natick.
Yep, they're on the list.
Okay, okay, great.
You may have said that earlier, we have, we have them on here.
And I remember you mentioned something too, Sarah, that, um, and help me up, but there's someone here that's employed by the town, whose spouse is the director of the Intergovernmental.
Randolph, yep.
Okay, all right.
They're top of the list.
Who is that again? Is it Arlen's and?
It's Arlene's husband.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay, okay.
Yeah, we have twenty towns that, that write off the bat, that we're gonna, you know, that we'll reach out to.
Okay, awesome, awesome. And, one, one last thing, but, uh, yeah, so, this sort of dovetails with what you mentioned, but Rabbi Benjamin was in, um, in our last meeting, I'm sure you're well aware, and he had mentioned something regarding scholarships, so on and so forth. It's not exactly within your.
Oh, okay, that brings it about, yep.
But there's some overlap there.
Yep.
And he, it might be worth having a discussion with him.
Yep.
Um, because there's some overlap and, uh.
Just, just a thought, so we voted at that meeting, we're gonna, Michael's already started the ball rolling, we've charged the town administrator with coming up with a townwide policy specifically for that.
Okay, great.
For everybody to use.
And, and, and this question is open really to any of my colleagues on the board, but I recall during the election, Rich Bowler mentioned something about like a centralized, because you used the word, the terms, um, Sarah, which I love, catalog and database, where Rich felt that there were, some things were lost in translation, there's so much information going on, if we had some centralized, and I, and we're starting to do that, I think, at least at the selectmen's level, with events that are going on around town, but somewhere where, where families can access that's information, and it's, it encompasses everything.
Yep.
Does any of that ring a bell?
Well, I.
And if not, he might be worth reaching out to, because he had a great idea and it really sort of resonated with a lot of people, and I don't think it really went anywhere.
Yep.
But I don't know.
Okay.
Rich might be worth having a, talking to.
That's great.
Does that sound familiar?
Yeah, there's four people who haven't mentioned, who he didn't mention tonight, who do yeoman's work in this town, begin with Paul D'Amano, who does.
Yep.
Magna, and Lyra, Chris Potts, Maria, hundreds of kids. I mean, that, these are our people who roll up their sleeves, who are out there every day. The gentleman at Pierce, I can never forget, I remember, I know him by face, but I can never think of his name.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Is that who it is? The, uh, I can't even think what his role was, I just know him by name. Mary calls him like, God with a, I don't know, I can't, she has a nickname for him, I can't, but these people do yeoman's work in our town every day. Um, just a thought, um, and Chris Potts, who's made many visits there and with Magna, he, he suggested to me the other day, I'm sure you've heard, you heard everything I had to say tonight, the idea of us finding a placeholder for anything in the millions of dollars in the near future is, like, possible. And the other thing is, you weren't here, but two meetings ago, we had the Milton Animal League here, and we're making them to build a new shelter, we're not contributing a single dollar. There's not one tax dollar going towards that effort. They've done this all on their own. And I, not to say that, but one of the things that Chris, I think he talked to Magna about, if the library does sell the Kidder and they have that money, the kids clearly have an affinity and they view that library as theirs, perhaps you open up that whole, that whole top level. It could be done. So, if you visited to the, which is their room, there's two, perhaps you could open the whole thing up and give them the room that they need, um, they might be able to do that with short money, they not, I meant to say, I meant to say this to John Focarelli today, so if you're watching, John, you walked out of the room before, I could tell you this this morning, but, uh, it's just a thought. It's a place that they're at already, it's a place that they like, it's a, and it's a place that perhaps it could be expanded in the short term for not a lot of money and, um, just a thought. That's it, anybody else?
Um, so, um, two things. One, uh, there are other funding sources and there's a lot of creative ideas like that, Richard, so I don't, so I don't think that pursuing this, um, is, uh, is prohibited by the other things that we need in town. So, I think, you know, I think it's important for this task force to charge ahead and, and, and to the extent that the task force identifies and this board embraces the results of the task force for what they want to do, um, we might be able to find all sorts of funding sources. So, that's, so I, so I think the work is important, and I think, I think we can continue on those parallel tracks and, and then, and then if we, if we get an answer, then we'll have to try to figure out how to, how to make it happen. Um, two, there was, uh, there was one discussion on Monday night at the Youth Task Force meeting about, um, adding a park commissioner, um, and the park commissioner designated was, was Scott McKay. That's not on the agenda for this board tonight, we'll have to consider that another evening, but just for the benefit of the, of the, of the members, can you just kind of relay the discussion from your group, so that when we discuss it, we'll have that?
Um, I mean, I think we know, you know, we have, as Richard mentioned, um, we have subject matter experts in the room that are on the ground, um, in programming. So, we have somebody from the library, we have school resource officers, and Paul D'Amano from Parks and Rec. Their, um, program, their familiarity is at the program level. So, I think what we're hearing, what we're, so far what's popping up is that teen centers and community centers tend to be, come out of a Parks and Rec department. So, I think, I think it is wise for us to add, um, a park commissioner for that policy level, um, discussion that's going to start to happen. Um, I think, I think the, the list of questions that's going to come from somebody at the policy level is going to be so different from anything that I would be thinking about, even, you know, and, and many of the rest of us on the, the task force, so I think it's a great addition. I think, um, this is, you know, this is right in Scott's wheelhouse, so I think it's, to me, it makes sense. I would, I would encourage you to appoint him. Um, I, I don't see any downfall to it at all.
Just as a point of, if we were to hire this part-time person, I don't think it was intended to go into the park department. No, it was never intended that they were going to work for the park department.
That was the short, right, the short term.
Just to try and create our, your own, his own, or her own entity, which, to me, park department is just one of the aspects that all the other partners are in this. This is my own thought on this, and, which is why we set the task force up the way it is, and, and you have Paul D'Amano, who's the key player in this to me, from the parks. But I do believe in, we had a youth department in the past, I think, in the end, I will not be surprised that you're going to come up with this, with its own entity, and it, as it should be, and I think that's when we talked, because Mary, when we, we met with the superintendent, that was her thought on it as well, there not be a school, it may be a, initially a school, could be, and anyone could apply for it, but it'd be, it'd be, have its own independence, and I think that's a good idea.
My recollection on the part-time position was that was, um, was somewhat to, to fit the budget, too, right?
Yeah, I think it was going to sit in our office, just because we didn't have it in an org chart.
Yeah.
Almost similar to the arts and culture position, like, we didn't know where, who that person would report to, but just to get it off the ground.
And I'm, and I'm not saying that it has to be land in, with Parks and Rec, but that's where they, that's where they seem to live outside of Milton. So, I think, I think the perspective of, somebody with that perspective is going to be asking a whole new set, you know, a whole set of questions that we need to be thinking about. That's what we're seeing, and we are just starting in this, but that's where we're seeing these teen centers living, is in a, is in a Parks and Rec sort of world, as far as town government goes, so.
Okay, good? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay. Let me go back to item eight, which is a discussion approved for Article Fifteen and Article Thirty Seven. So, this is Article Fifteen from the two thousand and eighteen October special town meeting, the CFO model, and Article Thirty Seven from the two thousand and fifteen annual town meeting debt stabilization fund, which I've been referring to as the Hurley Amendment, to be voted on, to be placed on the ballot for referendum for our April thirtieth, twenty nineteen election. And it's, you see, there's an important note here that we must notify the clerk in writing at least thirty-five days, which would be March twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, before the election, in order for that ballot question, as worded in the October special town meeting, to be placed on the ballot. And that we, she also believes we must take a vote to place the questions on the April thirtieth, and then notify her. Do we want to vote it tonight? Do you want to, want to schedule it for the twenty-sixth? I don't, can we vote on it? It's just a discussion, we could vote on it tonight, it does say approval?
Yeah, I mean, sure.
They both seem like they're important things to put on, I, you know, there may be a question whether you, you want to schedule two questions that, on the same election or spread them out, but they both seem to be time-sensitive and they both seem to be important, so even though they're, it may create some confusion, um, the CFO, until we, until we know whether the, well, whether the treasurer's position will remain elected or become appointed as the town government study committee, and we were recommending to town, town meeting approved, um, we really can't hire that position, the CFO position, so, and obviously, the, the Tom Hurley special legislation is important for the fire building project, so it seems as though we have good reason to schedule both, even though it could create some confusion, or at least require a lot of communication.
True. So, do you want to do it tonight, or you want to schedule it for, for a vote on the, schedule for a vote on the twenty-sixth? Or you want to vote it tonight? I'll do, I'll do, I'll be, you want?
I'm ready to do it tonight.
I am, I am too.
Okay.
I'm ready to do it tonight.
I think the proposed motion is worded, we're not actually putting the articles on the ballot, it's, it's just, is referendum questions relating to these articles.
So, I, I think I would take this as a motion to approve Article Fifteen, everything that's in black, um, as a motion. Am I right in saying that? Just breathe that as a motion? I don't think we need that.
I think just with the, with the, with the change that, that we're placing on the, on the election ballot, the referendum questions relating to these articles, relating to the, the fire building, the fire, the capital needs for fire and DPW special legislation and the chief, the appointment of the treasurer.
To articulate those, to spell those out. I get that.
Yeah, it's not the articles themselves, it's going to be different language, it's going to be a question.
I just want to put that in a motion?
I'll move that we, um, place on the April thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen election ballot, two referendum questions, the first relating to Article Fifteen of the October two thousand and eighteen special town meeting, relating to the treasurer's position, and the second relating to Article Thirty Seven of the two thousand and fifteen annual town meeting, relating to the special legislation.
Second.
We're discussing. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. All right, now I'm going to go to item ten. So, this is a whole, this is the approval renewal of common victory licenses for twenty nineteen. We have a very long motion, this is proposed to, so if, uh, if everybody could do five, um, I'll start to my followers, maybe Tony begin with you, do the first five and then come right around. At least do five, get them all done.
Uh, should I? Um, so I move to approve the renewal of the following fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, common victory licenses, uh, five fifty-six Adam Street LLC, doing business as Novara, uh, B and D Ichiro Incorporated, doing business as Ichiro Sushi, Behind the Other Net, Coffee Break Cafe, and Ho Jam Incorporated, doing business as Mr. Chan's.
Second.
Oh, keep going, keep going, okay, we'll second them all, then. Keep going, keep going, okay, we'll second them all, then. Katie, why don't you pick up a K and K?
Okay, it seems a little hard to figure out who made the motion if we're all reading it.
Oh.
I can continue on, that's fine.
Oh, you want to keep going? All right, that's fine, all right, go ahead, all right.
K and K Kitchens, et cetera.
I was just trying to split.
LLC doing business as Pondview Pavilion. Caribou Coffee, doing business as Rovers Bagel Bakery. Milton Dunn LLX, doing business Dunkin' Donuts. Milton Fuller Housing Corporation, doing business as Fuller Village. Three seventy-two Brushell Road. Milton Fuller Housing Corporation, doing business as Fuller Village. Thirteen ninety-nine Brushell Road. Milton's Opus LLC, doing business as Steel and Rye Restaurant. Newcombe Farms, Peel Pizza. Spellbound Incorporated, doing business as Milton House of Pizza. Starbucks Coffee. Seventy-five sixty-five, five fifty-two Adam Street Stella's Luncheonette. The Plate, The Plate at Milton Marketplace. Tino's Pizza. Welch Restaurant Management LLC, doing business as Abbey Park. And Wolf Street Restaurant Group LLC.
Second. Someone else second? Melinda second that? Any other discussion?
Are we missing one? Because Welch, we don't have Novara here, do we?
Yeah, it was at the beginning. It's a different, it's a DBA, so he was first. We don't have Wallace, does Wallace doesn't have vixuals license? I don't see them on there.
There was one we were waiting on, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the one that just jumped out at me, okay.
They can't serve food at the moment, anyway.
All right, okay. Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item eleven, approval of one-day liquor licenses for the Eustace Estate and the trustees, formerly known as the trustees of reservations. So a little bit of a motion here.
I'll move to approve the following one-day liquor licenses. The Eustace Estate for January sixteen, 2019, for the Head-to-Toe Craft Workshop. The Eustace Estate for February eighth, 2019, for the Three Stages of Love Concert. The trustees, formerly the trustees of reservations, for December twenty-first, 2018, for Solstice Illumination Night.
Second.
In discussion. I just have one thing, on the trustees one, maybe you might want to touch base with Chief King. That's a dark spot going, that's at night, in the nighttime, we might want to ensure they have a traffic deal. It's an unlit, egress there, that chain gate. I take it they're going to park on the field? That's all I have on that. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item twelve, boards and appointments, trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust. Would you like to nominate your friends, your colleagues?
As soon as I get back to it, something happened here, I'll use this. Yes, I would be happy to. I move to reappoint Thomas Callahan of sixteen Orono Street, Julie Kramer of fifty-eight Frothingham Street, Philip Murphy of ten fifty Canton Avenue, Frank Davis of sixty-six Valley Road, to serve as members of the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust through November of 2019.
Second.
In discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thirteen, boards and committees. This is appointments to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. We have a motion before us to, if I can have someone read that motion.
I move to reappoint Laura Beebe of fifteen fourteen Canton Ave, Nancy Chisholm of one twenty-nine Gulliver Street, Kristen Kleiman of ninety-nine Otis Street, Branch Lane of eighty-five Highland Street, Christine Paxia of ten seventy-two Brushell Road, Jean Powers of thirteen seventy-two Brushell Road, number B three oh seven, Carol Stocker of two ninety-one Hillside Street, Frank Taylor of ninety-eight Gulliver Street, to serve on the Shade Tree Advisory Committee through November of 2019.
Second.
In discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Fourteen. This is the approval of the Mary B Wakefield Estate pilot payment, which came in on Monday?
Early last week.
Early last week.
So we have a motion here to approve a $10,000 donation from the MB Wakefield Estate?
I move that we accept the Mary MB Wakefield Estate pilot payment in the amount of $10,000.
Second. In discussion.
Maybe, I'm sorry, maybe the town administrator can just kind of describe. This is an unsolicited pilot payment from the Wakefield Estate?
Correct, it's been $10,000 each year for the, as long as I know. Yeah.
And it's, I think, as I remember, percentage-wise, it's probably pretty high in terms of what we would request if we requested a pilot payment of them. It's something that they do without our even asking.
Correct.
And it's, it was always nice to see on the pilot committee. So, anyway, I think it's a great, it's a great thing that they do, and they've done it for a long time. And I think they deserve a great acknowledgement for it.
I do too. I was just at the progressive dinner on Friday, and, you know, looking at the state of the main house, I'm sure that they could use that $10,000. So it's really appreciated because that is a large tract of land that is maintained as open space. And so I appreciate that they do this.
Anybody else?
Mike, your experience on the pilot committee has been that you think, based on the value of that, that they would approach that threshold, that the pilot looks to the other?
It's my, it's my memory. Certainly, when I was on the committee, we focused on the big three, and that's probably what we're going to be talking about in a minute. But in terms of, my memory is that their property value was significantly less, certainly than the other three.
Right.
And that this number was a pretty good number, given the value of their property.
And unsolicited.
And unsolicited. And because, you know, again, when I was on the pilot committee, what we did was we focused on the three with the, by far, the highest property values. And there were some at the lower levels that we, you know, we thought it wasn't, and there were other, you know, some of them were religious, obviously, and so there are other things, others that we didn't really focus on. But Mary B Wakefield Estate paid regardless.
Good ear. So, hearing no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So Mr. Dennehy, you going to give us an update, Article, item fifteen?
Sure, yeah, just a brief pilot update on the heels of the Wakefield Estate check coming in. We, Jen McCullough ran a report for us, and you'd be surprised to know that that's actually nine percent over the last three years. Over the last three years, the town has received a little over $327,000 in pilot payments, thirty thousand of which came unsolicited from the Wakefield Estate. So for them, we thank them again. The Milton Housing Authority is bound to make a payment in lieu of taxes. It's roughly $9,000 a year. The other eighty-three percent of that $327,000 number comes from Curry College. So about a year ago, I believe it was December nineteenth, the previous board, with the help of the pilot committee, Mr. Zulus was a resident on that committee. Chairman Burns was the board appointee to that committee. We worked diligently. Mr. Zulus and, Selectman Zulus and Matt Keswick, another resident in town, were on the negotiating committee. We spent a lot of time with the big three and outwent the letters, the FY nineteen pilot letters. I can report that Curry College, on the first day of the fiscal year, upped their annual payment from $86,305 to $100,000. Both BID Milton and Milton Academy have not submitted a pilot payment for FY nineteen. The new committee was formed shortly after this board reconvened as a group of five. Mr. Selectman Farrington is on that board. We've met four times since inception. Barb Reitz replaced Jim Henderson as the Board of Assessor representative. Myself, Matt Keswick is still on the board, and Jennifer Heim joined us. We've met diligently. We've talked to each of the large big three, if you will. Again, most recently, we sat with President Fernandez and had a very vibrant dialogue about the state of the hospital and their partnership with the town, everything they do do for the town. So we're actively working through the new assessment values. We've taken a longer look at that letter to see if this is something we should continue to send out, and that's one of the questions to the board. The Board of Assessors, their tax classification for FY nineteen was approved, and the new calculations have been made. Just a discussion for this board, and I asked Selectman Zulus and Farrington to chime in here if we continue with these letters. If so, we can draft them up and have them sent out with updated values and assessments from Chief Appraiser Barb Bushway. Or if we want to modify it in some way, shape, or form, or table it and talk about it. I know the reason these letters went out at this time last year was because that's the last quarterly tax bill. It's the timing of that, so it would coincide with the treasurer's office receiving that bill. So just, I'll open it up for discussion, and if you want to add anything, Selectman Farrington, about what we've worked through and some of the conversations.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to. I mean, just to provide an update, I did have a lunch with, head of school at Milton Academy, Todd Bland. I thought it was a beneficial lunch. I thought that it was productive. And, you know, my hope is that we'll continue to have that dialogue moving forward. He had some good ideas that he was open and agreeable to, and I think it just merits further discussion. As you mentioned, Mike, we, I think, was it yesterday or the day before, we had a meeting with Rich Fernandez, and again, similar sentiment. My thinking is that they understand the value of something like this. And, you know, Curry has led the way, certainly. The evidence is in the numbers that you just presented in terms of the three-year history of these pilot payments. With respect to the letters that have gone out in the past, do we do that moving forward? I mean, I think it's a question for the committee itself. If we could, you know, include that on our agenda for the next meeting and discuss that, deliberate that, the five of us. I think there's some other creative approaches that we could take and see what result we might get from that. So I feel like we're making progress, I really do. I'm a glass-half-full kind of guy when it comes to this sort of thing. But in developing relationships with each of the individuals of, as Mike says, the big three, Ken Quigley and Todd Bland and Rich Fernandez, I believe firmly that they understand the value of this and that they want to do the right thing. The challenge that we face is that they themselves individually are also accountable to their own boards. And so it's trying to identify a way where we can prompt a contribution in such a way that they are not boxed in, in the boards that they report to. So we'll see.
So I would say two things. One, back of the napkin calculation is that Curry came up with twenty-five percent of, for this year, which is a significant increase, and I think they deserve a lot of credit and a lot of acknowledgement for that. They came up with twenty-five percent of the requests that we sent out last December. And I think that's a great improvement, and I think Curry deserves a lot of credit for that. The other two are still at zero percent. I am very much in favor of sending out the letters again. I think if we're going to comply with our own policy, we are almost obligated to send out those letters because that is our policy, that is our current policy. And so I am very much in favor of, you know, having the calculations. Obviously, we can get a recommendation from the pilot committee based on their work, but I'm very much in favor of it because it does comply and it does show some action with respect to that policy. And I think if we just were to do it one year and let it drop, that would send the wrong message.
Well, just to interrupt for a second, and I may not have my facts correct, but my impression or understanding was that we've done it successive years, more than one year.
Last year was the first year.
It was.
Using the formula, using the formula.
I stand corrected.
Oh, there's been attempts prior to the formula. I mean, Curry's been paying for a while before the formula existed.
So there's been solicitations, but the, for lack of a better term, the Boston formula, the first year that we mimicked the Boston formula was last year, Mike.
The first year we sent out letters under the formula in the policy was last year. The payments that Curry had made previously were pursuant to an agreement from about twelve years ago. Curry had with the then-town, with the town at that time, it's a very open agreement. And so, but last year, as my understanding, was the first time that we sent out requests pursuant to the policy. And so, you know, again, my view is we shouldn't let it drop, we should continue it.
I agree with you in that, I mean, full disclosure, I've said this many times. President Quigley is my friend, I think the world of him, I think he's a wonderful partner for this community. I also know President Fernandez and head of school, Todd Bland. But, and I've said this, I don't know if I've said this to Todd, but I've definitely said this to Rich, is that it can't be at zero. We did, there's a reason why we did this. And they do draw a lot of resources, and they never have to blink, and we're there to support them. And so, I mean, I just, things that I've been involved in so many ways, just, something is better than nothing, and again, I'm with you, Michael, I applaud President Quigley for doing it because he didn't have to do that, but I just, I wasn't surprised when he did it. And I didn't know he was doing it. I wasn't surprised when he did it. But what good is all that work if we don't continue to push it? It just, so I do think we need to send the letters again, I really do. I think if they think that we're not serious about this, then how can they be serious about it if we're not serious about it? So I do think we need to, like, be serious. I mean, a step forward is, President Quigley can do it, they could both do it. They both can do it, so. So do we need to take a vote to send the letters, or are the letters going on automatically?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Tony, you said you had some positive dialogue with them, and I liked the term you used about relationship building, and I think that's what is so important here with the three institutions. Was there, what was the next steps in those meetings? Was it discussed that this could be a follow-up meeting, or how was it left at those meetings?
Well, the question I was just about to ask, and Mike helped me out, but it was my understanding that they were invited here tonight to participate, or to?
Not formally, no, we mentioned, you know, the agenda's.
That they're on the agenda?
Public notice, yeah. We happened to talk to Rich yesterday and just, you know, mentioned to him that it was on the agenda. They're always welcome to attend, it's a public meeting, but not formally, and we didn't formally invite them. I think the idea was to discuss things tonight, get a taste for the board, and then formalize the letters if we're going to, and we could vote on those at the next meeting.
Okay.
To get them out and.
To answer your question, Katie, the next step with Milton Academy was to meet with Todd Bland and then Heidi Vanderbilt Brown. And Todd Bland asked me, and I relayed this to Mike, and I know that Mike is working on it. I got the impression that head of school, Todd Bland or Mr. Bland, was agreeable, amenable to entertaining the possibility of making a financial contribution to infrastructure projects that the town has coming up that would, I don't want to say, well, certainly benefit Milton Academy, but would somehow, whether it was contiguous with their property, whatever the case may be. He specifically asked me for items, and he's, if I recall, he used the term menu items, of things that are coming up within the town that would in some way interact with the property of Milton Academy or the infrastructure, whatever it might be. And so we're working on getting something like that over to Todd. I got the impression that entering into a formal agreement with either of the two, I didn't get some positive reactions to that. So, you know, I'm not, I don't know where that leaves us, but I got the impression that there was some distance there. But on the other aspects, there seemed to be some definite positives. So we do have some next steps in place for Milton Academy. Not so much for Milton Hospital right now. But that will change once we meet as a committee. And in fairness to Mike and to Richard's point, I was unaware that we had only done that one year. I agree with you, keep beating that drum consistently. It was my impression that we had been for a number of years. And so I thought, oh, maybe let's think outside the box, let's think, and we can still do that, we can do both. I think that's the beauty of it. We're not limited to one or the other. It's not any either or proposition, I think it can be both.
Didn't we vote this when it was David, Katie, and I, and you were on the committee?
That's right.
And then it went out last night?
That's right, yeah.
Because I think if we're not consistent, all your work was for nothing. And the work that you're trying to do now is for nothing. So I think that consistency, moving forward from our point, I mean, your committee did all this work to get us here, I think we need to support it.
Right, and the idea of the policy at the time, the way Boston rolled it out, was a five-year phase in.
Right.
So there's a number at the bottom. You'd ask them to give you one-fifth of that number and phase it in over five years. So technically, this would be the second mailing of five.
Okay, okay.
And we laid that out, all out for them last year, because the number that, the number in the letters was the gross amount. It wasn't the five-year phase because they hadn't, because that wasn't. It wasn't the five-year phase because they hadn't, because that wasn't, there wasn't any agreement. Now, now, we do have a lot of capital projects, you know. I could see, you know, I, I could see supporting, not having an agreement if Milton Academy were to, you know, take the lion's share of $25 million for fire stations.
Hey, I think it's a win-win for everyone. The fire station services Milton Academy's.
Exactly right.
You know, so.
But, 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 but short of that, you know, I think we need to, I think we need to, you know, comply with our policy.
I, I think what's important here is how we approach this. I was really not in favor of sending those letters out last year. I think I made that pretty clear. We've modified the letters. I did sign them. But I am concerned about the approach. These are three valuable, respected institutions in our town that really play an important service. And I'm, I'm really grateful to Curry for increasing their, their pilot donation this year. I think what we all want here is an outcome where we, we get to an agreement with the institutions where we're, where the town is getting some kind of a payment from the institutions. I would prefer to see us continue to have the dialogue and, and to keep an open communication going. The letters didn't bring in any funds last year from two of the institutions, but-
Did bring one though.
Yeah. But I think it's important how we approach these institutions. I, I don't think the letters were as well received by at least a couple of the institutions last year as they, as maybe perhaps we thought they would be. That's what I guess all I'm trying to say. I, I might be willing to sign a modified version of these letters. I would rather there be a continuing dialogue with them. We, we can do both, but I want to, you know, we, we want an outcome here. And what's the best way to get to that outcome? And I do think a continuing dialogue with them is the best way to do that.
And to your point about Milton Academy and infrastructure. I know I have a letter in a file that came from them talking about the, the contributions they made to-
Oh, yeah, I've seen that.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, so that, there was nothing spent on that project then?
So I'll give you the, I'll just give you a taste. And Katie, I hear you on that too. And believe me, I wish, as you just articulated, in an ideal world, there could just be a conversation when it's done. I really do. But just in support of those who are providing the services, the people who are out there doing it, the police, fire. I mean, they, they dedicate an inordinate amount of time. I mean, it's not just today. It's not just the calls for service. It's not just the psych patients, the, it's not the mental health issues. It's not just, it's not the firearms. It's the, it's the trainings that, that we're doing for our own employees, the act of sure, the, the emergency response, to cool them on our local emergency planning committee, all of the, and I, and I don't mean this in any disrespect and, and, but I'll say this about Curry. I have always felt in the strongest way, both as a department head and sitting on this board, Curry is an active partner of this community. And I've heard it from so many aspects of this community. Milton Hospital to a lesser degree. And not, and I, I hate to say it, but not, no, Milton Academy is always us helping them, always, always us helping them. And not, I agree, we should do that. But I do think there should be some. Marvin Gordon made a very strong pitch to Michael and I the other night about some of their property that is considered non-taxable, that should be on the tax rolls. And he, Marvin, I mean, he has great institutional knowledge. And I sent my list to him and he had a good point. He really did. He had a very strong point. And that's something I would have thought of. But his final point was that Milton Academy is aware of it. And I was like, I, I hear you, Katie. And I'm, I'm sure that every word I'm saying right now is getting back in some way, shape or form. And I just think that there's a reason why they're the big three. They're the big three because they draw the most services from this community. It's as simple as that.
But to that point, Richard, let me just ask, I know that the hospital, and perhaps the others as well. I know that they requested last year, because we were making that argument that we're providing a lot of services. And I know there was some discussion about the level that's actually provided. And I think some information was requested from the town. I don't know if it was submitted. Maybe someone else does know. So I'm just wondering whether, do we have some open informational requests that are, that are out there that we haven't responded to yet? It's just a question.
So my meeting with Rich, he tried to convince me that Michael's, no, Michael was coming from left field without. And, and I was like, look, Rich, I've lived this. I've been here. And I just, he's, they're not. And so, and I love the fact that we have a hospital here. I love it. And there's a reason why they pay in Boston because they, the city understands it. You know, they understand, and, and we should be viewed the same way as BI Boston is. Not to the same, maybe not to some financial level, but Katie, at this point, I take, I think we'll be on discussion. I think, I, I hear you. I wish in an ideal world, we could just go in and Tony could go on a lunch and say, here's what it is. We don't have to send any letters.
I pretty much did exactly that.
I don't have that. I, I mean, do you? I don't, I just don't.
So we've been working, you know, we've been meeting with them now for over a year and a half. I don't think standing up and complying with our policy precludes us from having discussions. I don't think it precludes, I don't think, I don't, you know, I'm, you know, doesn't, doesn't seem to me that if we, if we, if we send letters in compliance with our policy, it doesn't mean that we're somehow not being neighborly and not being friendly. It seems to me that, you know, we need a little bit more from the other side in terms of being neighborly and friendly. So, you know, we've been, we've been, we've been discussing this for more than a year and a half. We can continue discussing it. We will continue discussing it. But we have a policy and I think we should comply with it. And, 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 and I hope that, I hope that the nonprofits, some of the nonprofits that haven't been willing to work in compliance with this policy will begin to. So that's, that's my view.
I give you, I'm, this, I draw you back to an issue, Katie, when I'm chief and you're on the board. And I was chair of the track, and we recommended at their request to us, they were going to pay to update some signs. Do you remember this? They put the signs in, the, the speed sign. And they went and put in way before we had the money, the first flashing, they had the money to do it.
Are you talking about Milton Academy?
Yeah. And we said, okay.
On Santa Street?
On Santa Street. And we, we approved it. We recommended it to you. You put, I, I didn't even, I don't think I even knew the technology was even. We thought it'd just be the same. And a week later, you and I had a conversation like, how did this happen? And it was their money. I mean, they were doing it for their benefit, but it just, if you're talking about infrastructure, and I, I hear you, Tony, if they're talking about something, infrastructure, you know, help us put the satellites in it, going into Milton Village or something that's going to. I, I can live with any of that, but can't just be on Santa Street or Brook, you know, just, I, I'm-
Yeah. I was on the board that adopted the policy. I'm not opposed to the policy. But I don't think the policy says we have to send a letter every year. What I'm saying is I think our tone has to be appropriate to get the desired outcome here. And I'm not sure that it was last year. Perhaps it was in the case of Curry, but, because they've increased their payment. I, I would, whether we send a letter or not, I would like us to continue the dialogue with them. And I think that's probably the best way of going about this, but.
Well, I'd like to bring it back to something I, I mentioned earlier. I, I think not too many instances where you can have it both ways, but I think we could have it both ways. I really believe that. I think that we can send the letter and we can continue to engage in this dialogue. Todd Bland and I had a lunch that went close to two hours. We really got to know one another. He gave me a wonderful top-down understanding of Milton Academy and, and secondary school education. And I'm, I'm a better person for it. And I believe in my heart of hearts that he wants to do the right thing. The question becomes, how do we create a path to allow him to do that?
Did you talk about the letters at all with either one of them?
We did.
You did?
Yes.
Did he ask who was coming?
He did not. He did not. But I, I want, I want to make two points. One about the hospital and one about Milton Academy. In fairness to Rich Fernandez, in our discussion the other day, Milton Academy does pay property taxes. Now, Matt Keswick, Mike and I asked Matt to be here tonight. He had a prior engagement. He's a real authority on this, as you all know, I don't have to tell you. But the Lenz Office Building is not tax exempt. They are on the, on the tax rolls. And they do pay property taxes. So technically, Rich Fernandez is correct. Now, it's not a payment in lieu of taxes. They're obligated to pay taxes and they do. So it's a matter of interpretation. Yeah, of course. No, I mean, they're, they're doing something.
Nice that I pay my property taxes.
They're obligated to pay. But, but, but the reason that I'm even mentioning it is because, and Rich brings up a good point, to the extent that the dialogue gets twisted into, well, we don't make any contributions. Well, yes and no. And again, it's a matter of interpretation and how you read a situation. They do pay property taxes in the form of the Lenz Office Building.
Doctors pay rents that cover those taxes.
They have not made a payment in lieu of taxes, which is something different.
Right.
Similar, but, but different. With respect to Milton Academy, and I pointed this out to, to, to Todd, in our discussion, Phillips Andover kept coming up again and again and again. And there's some, some, some-
They, they pay $300,000 a year.
And I have it right here. I mean, that was a school that Milton Academy sort of lumps itself in with and vice versa. They're very, very similar in many respects. And they pay the town of Andover upwards of, well, they entered into a agreement, into an agreement where over the course of eight years, they will be paying the town of Andover in excess of $3 million. And I think that's remarkable. And I, and I'll read it. This agreement, signed by the Board of Selectmen and Phillips Chief Financial Officer Stephen Carter at last Monday night's meeting, is the continuation of an understanding between the two parties dating back to 1999. After nearly two years of negotiations, and this is going back three or four years to 2015, after two years of negotiations, the town signed an agreement with Phillips Academy last week that obliges the nonprofit private school to make a quote voluntary payment in lieu of property taxes over the next eight years worth $242,000 to $382,000 annually. Over the course of eight years, it's in excess of $3 million. So, you know, I, I think that, you know, Phillips Andover is really leading the way in, in forging a path. And the other thing too, that, that, this is what I've learned participating in the, the pilot committee, is that up until a couple of years ago, the sons and daughters of all the professors, the children of the professors at Milton Academy were entitled to go to the lower school free of charge. That's no longer the case. And many of those professors have elected to send their children to the Milton Public Schools. And the cost per child to educate is $14.1, $14,000 roughly, times the number of students. And Mike, feel free to chime in here because you know the numbers.
It's about a half million. It's about a half million.
So we're, we're now spending that, you know, to educate. And I think that, so that, that sort of draws it down on, on the other end too. And I think brings a sense of urgency to this contribution that did not exist prior to this, this change. So.
But just to follow up on your point about the medical office building, you know, they've told us in prior communications, that's distinguishes their, the Milton situation from the Boston situation. Because the Boston situation is doctors' offices, but they're not, all the properties-
And Rich, and Rich-
And they've made that point over the last year to us.
So you, you could?
No, I mean, the Boston situation is, you know, Beth Israel Dickinson, Boston pays 100% of the request from Boston. And I don't know what it was last year, but the year before was $3.17 million. And that's, you know, that's, that is the parent, if you will, of, of Beth Israel here. And we're not asking for 100%. We're not asking for $3.17 million. We're asking for something.
So just to move this along, and I, I'm just going to conclude this for you, Tony, going forward. And Katie, I hear you on this as well. I'll leave you this one front. You heard, I mean, I, I think I've been as dire as I've ever been tonight. We're talking about dollars and it's not using my method. But it's, it's, we're talking about our ability to put that off from the police car who's going to go to them, to have that fire truck staff who's going to go there to them, that's going to service them. That's what we're asking them to support here. Or we're asking them, you know, contribute towards, something towards the fire. I mean, one of the great things, I, I'm very, I never knew, I never really knew Webb Collins until I've been involved in this fire station, but building command. And I, Webb, he, he sees like the big field, the big picture, you know, who else can come in and partner with us in this? Who's, I mean, do something like that. Do something, you know, you want to talk about infrastructure? Help these firefighters. Help the, you know, do something like, do, that's, you know.
I believe that that's the, the request or the question that Todd Bland was really asking. I believe that. Like, when, when you put it in that framework, it, it's a lot more relatable. Okay? And, and so I agree with you. It's a wonderful way to put it and it's-
If you can build all these things for your students, pay for something infrastructure that is part of the protective umbrella that makes it so safe for them to live in the Milton Academy environment. Because we're the ones who are ultimately providing that umbrella. So, that's my front. We could go on with this.
We could talk about this all night. And, and this is the last thing I'll say on it. But to echo Mike's sentiment, and, and Richard knows Ken better than any of us. He likes to keep a low profile, fly under the radar, but it was extraordinarily generous of him and Curry to do this. And there's no question they're leading the charge on this. And so I would like to, to thank him individually and Curry for their contribution.
He knows, and he's not coming here either, by the way. He's not coming. Just.
I think the phrase that everyone, is slipping everyone's mind that they're trying to think of is mutually beneficial capital projects.
Right.
Mutually beneficial capital projects.
Right. And I guess all I'm saying is I think you'd get to that with a lot of, with a lot of dialogue. Rather than public letters and-
I get that. I get that. And I encourage, I just want to see something happen. I just, I, I don't want us, I don't want us to be sitting here a year from now, having the same discussion.
Well, we had the same, we had the discussion last year.
That's right. That's what I'm saying. I'm with you.
And the letters, the letters were after eight months of discussions that led nowhere. So.
Do you have follow-up discussions scheduled with either one of them?
With Todd and Heidi, yes. With Rich, no.
Well, Rich did leave us with a little bit of a hallmark assignment. And that's where Matt Keswick can clarify some of the, some of the information with respect to the discussion about taxable, non-taxable, on the levy, not on the levy. So we'll follow up. Make that an agenda item for our next pilot committee meeting.
Okay, okay.
I'm going to go with what Michael's about to say to you.
No, I, Richard was just saying, you know, should we have a vote on it? But I really think it's up to the committee to make a recommendation.
Whether or not we send them. How's that?
Whether and what we send. That's, that's, you know, that's what we did last year. And I think that's, that's a good process. You guys are on the ground. You guys are having the discussions and you, you know the tone. So I think it's up to your committee to, to make a recommendation to this board about what we should do.
Can you take, I know, can, I know. Can you live with, is that okay?
Well, I'm certainly happy to hear the committee's recommendation.
Okay, all right. But sooner versus, so you, you can come to us when you think, we're ready when you bring something to us. Okay. Okay, let's go. Where are we now? I, I, 16. We have a motion, this is a discussion approval on the long-term national grid moratorium extension. We have a motion for the Board of Suck to extend the non-emergency national grid moratorium that expired November 17th, 2018. I think you sent out a, I, did you draft that, Tony, that came out this week? Who drafted that letter that came? You did, right?
Well, I was asked some questions and I responded to the, you mean the email?
There was a letter in the email. There was a letter attachment in my email. I had a letter attached to it. Okay.
And we don't have to spend that much time on this one. I mean, we have a, well, as everyone's probably well aware, there's a Department of Public Utilities moratorium that was effective October 8th. My motivation for including this on the agenda is we, we don't know when that moratorium is going to end. And so I'd like to have something in place or be prepared to have something in place should that moratorium end, that we continue our town-issued moratorium. I, I think that that is really the, the, the best way to try to get this lockout to, to an end is to show that, you know, this is, again, it's, it comes down to a matter of public safety for all town residents. And, you know, if we can continue to beat this drum and continue to take the position that we took back in August, I think that's the best way to communicate that, you know, we're concerned about public safety and that we'd like this, you know, lockout to end.
Okay. So the only thing I think we need to insert here is that we're currently in December and this is winter. And anyone with no heat, potentially it's a life crisis, you know, these lives. So that we put that in there.
I mean, in the, there, there's a carve-out for emergencies. And to the extent that somebody does not have heat and that qualifies as an emergency, which it should, that would be, you know, there's-
Does no heat automatically make it a one? A one or a one eight?
Emergency stuff?
So there's, there's three, there's gas leaks, a grade one, a grade two and a grade three. A grade one is considered a hazardous emergency. Grades two and three, non-emergency, non-hazardous. Somebody without heat, I think we could, we could make a carve-out, you know, I think as a board, you know. We could just say, hey, listen, if we come across a situation where someone who has heat, now loses heat.
I think we should do that.
Yeah. I, I don't, I certainly don't want to be the guy that's responsible for saying, hey, we can't, we can't-
But we are opting to continue with a suspension of the number to, I would, I'd take out the 30 days. Let's just, let's, let's just leave it in disorder. Have to come back. Hopefully they settle this. But I think we should- leave it in disorder. Have to come back. Hopefully, they settle this, but I think we should put a carve-out for a lot of that. Given, given the, this, given that this lockout is now extended into the winter and the extreme cold that we intend to face, any situation where a resident of this community loses heat or has no heat, loses heat?
Yeah, someone that currently has. Heat provided by a gas line, and then subsequently loses heat as a result of some sort of, you know, infrastructure problem. That, that problem can be addressed and that property can be serviced. That to me, if that doesn't qualify as an emergency, I don't know what does. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a leak emergency. That's something different.
We can work on that, Jen, tomorrow. We can, you got that? Okay. Anything else? Anybody else?
Do we have a draft letter? I don't see one here in.
Sorry, I click on the box. Did you click on the red box?
I get the October letter.
That's the, that's the old, that's the old.
Okay. I thought, maybe I misunderstood earlier. I thought there was a.
That's what I was, I didn't, I was reading on my phone. So, what I, what I got on my phone was this, and I forgot to click on the red box. And then I remembered. I'm in a brand new world now. Click on the red box.
So, so is the idea we're gonna put together a letter and maybe approve it at the next meeting, or delegate it?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we vote on this now. We make the modification and the revision as necessary, the carve-out for the.
I'm okay with that.
The heat. We have it in place so that, I mean, I'm happy to advocate or make a motion to put this in place now, but it's somewhat of a moot point, given the fact of the DPU moratorium. But again, coming back to what I mentioned earlier, the moratorium, we don't know how long that's gonna last when it ends. So, let's say it ends tomorrow. I'd like to continue our town-issued moratorium. Now, we have this letter in place, drafted, signed, and now we just date it and send it. So, that's what I'm.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, although I think, you know, if, if the board wants to make a statement, and the board wants to make a, you know, continue to make a statement, then I think that, that argues in favor of sending, sending on the letter, you know, as soon as we have it. I think, you know, because if, if we just sit and wait until the DPW moratorium ends, if it does, that's not really making any kind of a statement.
That's even better. I'm all for that. I just didn't, I didn't want to press it.
No, I think if we're gonna do something, we should do it. You know, that's, 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 that's my view.
I'm just finding my spot back here. What day is today?
Today's the twelfth. My wife's birthday.
All right, so I'll. You wanna do that? Let's, you wanna approve it, Tony? We'll just work the language into it.
For, yeah, for sixty days.
I'm gonna do sixty. Let's just leave it open. Let's leave it open.
All right.
Let's leave it open. Okay. Any further discussion? So, do you want to make that a motion? Then I'll take a second.
I move for the Board of Selectmen to extend the non-emergency National Grid moratorium for an additional, for an open.
Period. Period.
An open-ended period of time with a specific carve-out for Milton residents who lose heat as a result of a.
How about we say experience a cessation in heat?
Experience, perfect. For Milton residents who experience a cessation.
Sudden cessation.
Sudden cessation of heat as a result of a compromised gas line.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Item seventeen, discussion approval, Policy Committee update and approval recommendations from the Policy Committee. This is your baby. Want me to hand this to you? Want me to hand this over to you?
So, so there's two broad categories. One is the, the group of policies and procedures really governing this board that first were presented back in July, I think, either June or July. And then the second broadly is the vehicle use policy. I think, I think maybe we can take the, the policies and procedures for this board first. So, what you have in your packets are red lines showing the changes that have been made since. They were published to this board back in, back in, I think it was June.
May, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was June, June or July. Anyway. And what we have done is tweaked some of them and incorporated all the comments that we've received. At least we've tried to, and I think we have. So, I think these are in shape to go. We've reviewed them once. You know, we can, obviously, we should talk about them, and if people have, if members have, have questions, comments, concerns, or amendments, we should, we should talk about those. There is one of the policies, the Finance Committee policy, that I think is in shape, other than we, the intention is to coordinate with the Finance of Committee and add the financial policies. And so, you know, we could do that, we could take that one one of two ways. We could either adopt it as is with the placeholder for the financial policies, or we could just wait until we have it, have it in total. So, so there are, let me count the number. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, ten. So, there are ten policies, and I can read them all. We can take them separately. We can take them one by, we can take them en masse. It really depends on, you know, how we wanna, how we wanna do it. So.
Let me ask this. Is there anyone who has a concern on any of the ones?
I've read through it, and, and I defer to Mike's judgment on this.
No, I, I read through them. I don't have anything else to add. As far as the Finance Subcommittee, I would prefer to vote it and then add the policies later, only because the, the goals are. But I don't know, Katie, is there, would it be better to wait?
Can we just add them into the first line, the financial policies?
Yeah.
You know, because it's really just, that's, that's the bulk of what we've been doing so far, has been financial policies. So, if we could just add it in as maybe new number five or, like, number four. Financial policies and then change four to five.
Oh, I, so, so, so this is going to be to advise the Select Board and the Town Administrator on, and then we add a new number five, saying financial policies?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Because ultimately, they'd be adopted by the Board, but we're working on bringing a few of them hopefully in January to the Board.
I misunderstood. I thought you wanted to include them as part of this. So.
Oh, no, they're really extensive.
I misunderstood the point. Fair enough. Fair enough.
I just meant that it's, we're within our charge.
If you want to hold off.
That's what I thought you were talking about, and I, I, yeah, I think they should be separate because, yeah.
So, so if the only amendment here is, is to, is on line three under goals to strike, I'm sorry, to strike the and on line three before four, to add a comma after Select Board on the fourth line and add a, you know, parentheses five, close parentheses, I'll say Select Board, comma, and parentheses five, close parentheses, financial policies, period.
Yep.
So, that would be the amendment. So, I guess we'll, we propose that as amended. We just go forward with it as one of the ten. If that's what everybody is, everybody is.
It works for me.
Yeah, me too.
All right. So, so I'll make a, a motion to, to approve the following policies of this board. Number one, agenda formats and comment, content, sorry. Number two, committees of the Select Board. Number three, duties of the Chair. Number four, duties of, duties of the Secretary. Number five, duties of the Vice Chair. Number six, executive sessions. Number seven, Finance Committee. Number eight, regular and special meetings of the Select Board. Number nine, policy adoption, which actually, in the future, will have a policy to do this. And number ten, rules of order and voting methods. So, I'll move to approve and adopt those policies.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right.
So, go ahead. You wanna go?
No, I was just gonna say, this vehicle use is the second one. And we've been through a number of iterations of that. I think it's been published to this board once before.
Yes.
The Chair's had another number of comments that we've, we've tried to incorporate and, and had some comments most recently. I actually had some revisions today. So, I guess the question is, and, and this is, this is a timing issue too for the town because I, I think Mike will tell us there are some benefits to getting this in place. But I guess the question is, with these recent revisions that the Chair and I have tried to, tried to make, and really, they're, Richard's resubstantive, mine were really ministerial, mine were really cleanup. Can we wait on this one until the twenty-sixth?
We can. The rewards will stand.
Yeah.
Yeah, as well. Wait till the twenty-sixth, and then, and then you can read, and Michael, circulate, because I made the change. We'll, we'll want to add in your reference to the statute, and then I can circulate them.
Certainly.
All right. I'm good. So, we'll put that, you got that, Jen? That's on for the twenty-sixth. We're getting moving along. Mr. Town Administrator.
Lot of talk tonight about budget and pilot and stuff like that, so I'll, I'll keep it very short. The energy aggregation two-week public meeting posting on the website expires tomorrow. So, we'll be taking that down at five o'clock, with the exception of Darrell Warner's question to me when energy aggregation is going to take place. We have not received any comments from the public. So, the plan is to hold a public hearing. I've reached out to John O'Rourke, see if that public meeting has to take place, has to be publicly advertised, at which point it would be at the January ninth meeting. If it doesn't have to be publicly advertised, we could have it as a part of the twelve twenty-six meeting, if we have room. And after that meeting, in which I'd like to have John O'Rourke there to answer any other questions, it gets submitted to Department of Public Utilities and makes its way to the final steps of the process. So, that will come down from the website tomorrow.
That is?
That's it tonight. Yeah.
So, we don't have much. I've covered it all. You know, I just want to thank all the committees. Thank you all as well for your work in the subcommittees. This is the end of our first year. Calendar year is a five-person board. There's been a lot of changes, a lot of momentum. And that's it. That's, and to everyone, I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy, yeah, we won't be back till after Christmas. And I think I already said, I think I already said Happy Hanukkah to our our Jewish friends, and that's it. Michael?
I don't have anything.
Katie?
I, I don't really have a report, but I forgot to mention something when we were covering President Bush. The picture of the marker up here, the lettering is very faded, and I'm wondering if we can get.
Re-did, cleaned up?
Yeah, maybe just get an estimate on how much it might cost, and if it's even possible to do more. It's all, it was originally all gold lettering, as we can see from this picture. And if we can, if there's a way for that to be repaired rather than replaced, that would be nice.
You call Therese? Who are you thinking of? I know Therese.
No, no, there was a gentleman that reached out about potentially building a sculpture of George Herbert Walker Bush. I disseminated the email to, to this board. I think it would be at the cost of the taxpayers, and I'm, I'm not sure. Well, the dialogue is just beginning with that gentleman, but just want to make sure everyone saw that.
Yes.
To your point on that, Therese, so this, she is a lot like that at the cemetery. There's a company that does this. So, maybe we'll have this discussion with Therese. Again, it's repaired. Yeah, again, it's repaired.
Yeah, maybe she could help us get an asset then for the cost.
Yeah, it doesn't look like that anymore.
No, it doesn't. And it really is not looking very good, so we should try to get it. It's been twenty-one years. We should try to get it cleaned up. Since you brought up the sculpture, I, I really think that's a little bit.
Too much?
Beyond what Milton needs to do. That, that seems to be more appropriate for, say, Kenny Bonkport or Houston than Milton, especially where I'm assuming it's gonna be pretty expensive. That's my thought. There's one member on the board.
I will say this story. I, I wanna, who called GB, I don't have it. GBH.
WGBH.
And one of the stories that I told was, in ninety-seven, I was nominated to go to the FBI Academy, which is a distinct honor and a large force, and you're there for three months. Chief King went as well. But no one, in my opinion, no one had gone since Chief Wordy, and it was like nineteen forty-seven. But one of the things you do when you're there is you have a, it's called the Hall of Honor, which is all the FBI agents that have been killed, and you, all three hundred of you go from your session from all over the world, and you speak. And in my case, I was very fortunate, I became the class president, which that's a whole story in itself. But you talk about your shoulder patch, and at some point, I mentioned, I don't even know what I mean, that I was from the town, the home of President George Bush. And when I was done, within ten minutes, I had nothing. They all wanted the shoulder patch. I was out. I think I had to get more because he was that, you know, thought of just around the country. You just don't, I remember going there thinking, how am I gonna survive? Never mind. But I always remembered that. It was, it was just saying his name, that this is where he was from, and boy, everybody wanted that patch, so. No, and Katie, I thank you, because you, I didn't even, you know, when he, when he died that morning, I didn't even think of, I'd forgotten about this day. It was, and it was such a big deal. Friendship that Jim Marlin and I have today came from that. We never really had a relationship until that happened. It was our friendship today that comes from that.
Well, I, I think the town did a nice job in ninety-seven, and did the appropriate thing to recognize the birthplace. But statute seems to me a little beyond what we need to do as a community, given his short, his, his, his short relationship with the town. It's a much different situation in Houston or Washington or Kenny Bonkport or somewhere else. Maybe in Andover, where he went to school for a number of years.
I agree. I think that's an elegant memorial.
It is.
And so, I'd also like us to get all of the correspondence, because we have had letters written back and forth over the years. We should make sure that all of that is in one place for the Historical Society, has records of it. I, I do want us to try to work on putting that together, make sure we have a file that has all of that correspondence, because that's important to the town's history.
Digitized, hopefully, too, just in case.
There's, there's one other thing too that I remember, then I, I just found them. Now I gotta find them again. Do you remember the day of the inauguration, the, the post office? There was a line. It was a special stamp for the day he was inaugurated, and you could go in, they would stamp anything you had, and the line was all the way down the stairs around. I, I remember that distinctly the day he was inaugurated. I was also there the day when the Boston Police Union endorsed him. They came to Florian Hall. They landed three helicopters in the McKeon. I'll never forget it. Like, no, we had no idea how he was coming. All of a sudden, they came right over the Keystone Building, and the three of them landed in the parking lot. I mean, it was like, wow. But, okay. Tony, go ahead.
I have two quick questions for Mike. Have you received any updates from the Cemetery Trustees regarding the superintendent hiring process?
Thirteen qualified candidates. Interviews were starting today.
Today. And how long do you think they'll last? A week or so?
I would say they're probably doing two or three a day. I'd say probably end of the week, next week.
With the expectation that whomever they decide to hire will begin February next year?
I think sooner. I think January, yeah. She's leaving in January.
Okay.
She, Trace Desmond, sorry.
Right, okay. And shifting gears, sound like a broken record. We found the Nissan leaf?
We may have found three Nissan leaves. So, the idea was to set up a ribbon cutting. I spoke to Stoli Singleton from Secretary Beaton's cabinet on Monday. I was, spent some time at the State House on Monday and today, and asked her if there would be a representative from Mastie O.R. that could show up, Power Options, which is the company that provided us with the equipment through a grant, EverSource, and the car dealership. We were looking to do it next week, the twentieth, but Bill, Richie seems to think the electricity is not gonna quite be ready yet.
Well, my suggestion might be the first of the year. It just seems like it's, there's so much going on between now and the end of the year, plus sort of like New Year, new beginnings, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah. And Secretary Beaton was, he's indisposed most days. He's up in Lawrence, Andover, North Andover, sorting out that stuff. So, yeah, that timeframe might work better. We can get a higher-ranking official from the state. They, they take it very seriously. As soon as I mentioned it, Stoli Singleton said that they would have somebody from the administration here for that, because it's so important.
Yeah. Great. Awesome.
But I appreciate that. I think after the first of the year might, might be better for everyone.
Yeah, I would agree. I would tend to agree. Yeah, okay.
Parking spots are all set. Difficult to plow out, but we'll figure it out.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good?
Yeah.
Good? Okay. Future agenda, future agenda items. First, the Sign of You Committee. Everyone is up December twenty-eighteen, so I'll have to reappoint them. Do we want to do that on the twenty-sixth, or can we do that in a January meeting?
Probably the January meeting.
Okay. The MPED contract expires. We're gonna extend that on the twenty-sixth. Comcast contract, maybe not?
Yeah, we haven't received the Comcast, the actual license yet.
Franchise agreement.
The franchise agreement. Thanks, Mike. And we're working through the dark fiber agreement. So, hopefully, the dark fiber. So hopefully, the dark fiber agreement will be in shape by then, hopefully. Not sure about the franchise agreement, because we haven't seen it yet. So, we, so, so to that end, it does, it does make sense to, to extend MPAG, because MPAG is really contingent on Comcast. So, so, so that's really the process.
And so then the last one that I have is, then I've thought about this, Michael did this, we talked about this, and you did this, where I was going, is beginning the first of the, I would like to start every meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. So, and the only thing I'd like to do, and just, I'd like to make our flag more prominent, so that people could see it when we're at home. Even if, one of the things that someone suggested to me, for example, is add an additional, you can have, you know, there's no requirement to only have one American flag, maybe add an additional American flag. So, but beginning of, and I've already asked Jen to make that, like, a point of the beginning of every meeting, so it's on, we'll start every meeting with it starting in January. All right?
I have a couple of future agenda items.
Sure.
I'd like to get the Historical Commission, it's on, but it doesn't begin the twenty-sixth, January, because they need to give us a report on the yacht club repairs, that building. And I, I think they were doing some follow-up work for us on that, and then on the historic districts that we talked about, especially from Milton Village, but anywhere in town. That was late summer, since we talked about that, so we need an update.
How about January ninth? That okay with you?
Sure. Yeah, if it's good for them, yeah.
Can we try for the ninth, Jen? Okay.
And then, second thing is town meeting articles. So on the twenty-sixth, we should see whether there's any that we, as a board, wanna submit. The Finance-
For the annual, for the annual?
For the annual meeting, yes, yeah. Sorry, for the May meeting. The Finance Committee is considering one that we may wanna bring forward. We're checking with Town Council on some questions about it, but it's one that we may want to bring forward.
From us, from our-
That the board would bring, yeah, we would bring it to the board, and then the board would decide whether to bring it forward.
That's a real tease. I wonder what, I'm very curious.
It's relating to investment of the town, of trust funds in the town, but we met with the treasurer and his financial advisor, but, but we, we're checking some legal questions on it, so.
That's great.
But the deadline is fast approaching, so we should put it on for the twenty-sixth if we, if we can.
And the Audit Committee is gonna come in on January ninth and give their report with Powers and Sullivan, yeah.
Okay. All good? All right, where are we at here? Citizen speak response. We don't have any. So I'm gonna make a motion, Jen, we're gonna, we're going to go on executive session with the Town Administrator to discuss the board on solid waste advisory committee meetings. And how do I say this? We're gonna, gonna come out just for, just to adjourn, right, Katie? We're only gonna come out of executive session to adjourn?
Yes, but you have the language for the, you have to state the reason.
No, no, I'm working.
It's probably in the policies.
Yeah, actually, it is. Here.
No, did, no, did I forget anything? Okay. Go ahead. You wanna read it? Go ahead, you read it.
I just have to find the actual-
I think the Chair is required to state the reason.
Yeah, I'll state it. I don't have the paws, I might need that.
So this one, of the ten reasons, this one is going to be-
Contract negotiations?
Contract negotiation.
Yeah, contract negotiation, right. So I think I go in this way. So I'm gonna make a motion to enter an executive session with Town Administrator Michael Dennehy, for the purpose of contract negotiation, the extension of the current contracts with our solid waste and recycling facilities. Do I need anything more than that?
Believing that having a detriment-
Yeah, believing that, yeah.
Having the discussion in open session would have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board.
Believing that having the conversation in open session would have a detrimental effect on the negotiations on behalf of the town. Mr. Farrington?
Second.
No, no.
Oh, yes.
Rock. Mrs. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Mr. Wells, yes. Mrs. Collins?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. You can go home, Fred. We're in executive session.